Meeting's order, declaration of there's no point information. This is first declaration of interest to anyone? Everyone? That's not your taxes and your mortgage. Okay, first but first off, I'll introduce the new guy in the block, John Ranger. And not a new name to City Hall, but a new face to City Hall. John, welcome.
Thank you.
When you said a new face, I was gonna stand up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, water wastewater draft operated budget, so who's gonna kick it off?
This is the first time for me, so I'm not sure what the process would be.
Be honest with you.
It's meant to you, as you can say.
Alright. You want to start up?
Yeah, I just go through it. You are first operating or can I do?
How about look at the reserves first and then operating?
Just a Reader Digest version and then the last questions.
Do you want me to start it off then, to look at the reserves?
Yeah, I can highlight on whatever part, but the other part maybe is here to go to more.
What page do we look for, Karen?
So if you go to appendix one, so it's a track of the budget narrative from the government that take it through that unless you want us to. And I think it would be worthwhile for council to first look at what's happening with the water and wastewater reserves. And you can see there the five year, the street 2012, the year projected 2016, because we don't have our year numbers quite finalized yet. At the end of 2016, we are looking for just over $1 million in the water and wastewater reserve. And I'm sorry, and I probably should have held it up so that council knows what the sheet is that they're looking at.
I'm using the ones that trimmed off, these ones, because these ones aren't cut.
And it's not changed, it's all good. So these haven't changed from the budget that you got sent out. And really what we're looking at is an ongoing increase in the rates based on the BMA municipal study, which is, I wish I would remember this, I want to say eight percent, probably seventeen and maybe eight percent in 2018 or starting to 5.5. But then 1,005 were after for a period of a year of municipal study. And you can see there that we are looking towards gradual building of reserves. There is some increased pressure in the first few years, 2017 through 2019. And then we're starting to in 2020 slowly build those reserves. And I think Beeman, you're probably right, going to capital first would be useful for council to see where we're looking at spending, or recommending spending those dollars in the next five years.
Just one question. So based on the 17 through 20, those projections are based on the BMA, the eight, the five point five, five point five all the way through?
Correct.
That's our basis to start.
And we're also anticipating a roughly two percent increase in expenditures for whatever was in the BMA study. I think it was actually 1.47 percent increase to expenditures over the next five years. So we're taking the estimate that they used in that study and applying it to our projections here.
And none of the capital is projecting any external funding source or its government grants or at this point?
I believe it could be that we're looking at downtown revitalization and funding sources. Sorry, I should have that from the top line up.
I know the 17, the narrative said there is no funding.
For 17, but if you look at the 2018 capital projects, we're actually looking at the downtown revitalization. And I think the same in 2020. And basically what we've done is we've dedicated the two thirds funding to move forward with those projects, just as we did of the municipal capital budget. So if you want to move to appendix number, I believe it's four this year. And this provides you a high level overview and then more detail on the capital budget plan for the next five years. And Beeman is going to walk us through some of the highlights of that.
As usual, there are seven components under water and sewer or water and wastewater division. And the fourth one, vehicles and equipment, basically goes under my, under free department and then I don't have any thing to say on this. But other six, under wastewater system, that is 411, we have four different items. The first one is wastewater collection program and that is most of the time is being looked at by Marco from engineering department. We just make a plan for the whole year and then we split up that budget in different groups. And the second one is manual covers. It is basically coordinated between two departments, roads department and water and wastewater division. And this is a carryover from the last year project. We have not said here as carryover, but it's basically the continuity of the last year work on manual covers. And for DTR Phase Three and DTR Phase Three Matheson Street South, we don't have any budget in 2017, that goes only in 2018. And in the second item, that is 412 wastewater lift stations. We have very serious issue on Crawford pumping station and that is one of our major three pumping stations in town. That's why we have a plan to renovate it. And right now we are at a stage of inviting engineering consulting for proposal, how to go with this. And then once we see the budget, then only we can carry out the works. But we believe that as for our initial estimation, the total cost will be somewhere around 300,000. And including engineering design cost, the budget is 350,000. Hopefully it will be enough for what we expect. And 100 main pumping stations, that is another major station. And we have a serious electrical safety issue in that station. That's why we are just trying to make this thing since 2013, 2014, but because of other weather hoax, we couldn't go for that. And this year we have put a budget for total replacement of electrical systems inside the station. And even that, that has the same story. We are thinking about around 250 to 325,000 dollars. That's why the budget is 340,000 dollars. Replacement of wastewater pumps, most of our pumping stations, like if you ask me about 65 pumping stations we operate in the city, that is the highest number in Ontario. No other city in Ontario has that much pumping station. That's why it's a very, very critical part of our water and wastewater division. And since last year, I have started this item under capital, because you know, like every year we have to replace couple of pumps in couple of stations. We never know. Most of the pumps are there since eighties and we don't know which pump is going to break down tomorrow or the day after. That's why like just for the safety thing, I always put this budget and I started that since last year. And for this year, only is already going to be spent for, around 30,000 is going to be spent for earth and creek. And the rest amount will be dispersed, whatever comes out in the next couple of months. And we make a plan for that. Normally with the station generators, that is basically a carryover from last year. The work was done in December end, I believe, but we couldn't make a payment, that's why we just wait online, the work is already done for that. And renovation of five major stations, I put this, I started this because like, like I said, out of those 65 pumping stations, around 10 are really critical and are of major types. And other 10 are, you can, you can re-group that in second origin, origin, origin item. Like if you, if you want me to recall the stations, Sultana, 100 main, Crawford, First Avenue West, they are, they are very critical and they are very, they are major stations. And the capacity of those stations is almost equal to wastewater treatment plant. But normally we never keep the budget for those stations. And if any pumping station breaks down, we'll have a very serious issue from the ministry and other things. That's why from next year, if we can keep some budget, maybe we should do some renovation part in two or three stations a year. And by after five years or six years, maybe we'll be 100 percent safer mode. That, that, that's our water and wastewater division plan. And I don't know how the budget comes up next year and the year after. But anyway, right now I have categorized in three or four different groups. The first one will handle five major stations like Sultana, 100 main, Crawford, First Avenue West. And the second group goes to North Hamilton, Matheson Street, and then dog pump pumping stations and there are more. That's why I have done some internal in-house work and I can come up with this, with those lists when the time for budget comes up for 2018 and 2019. This is the scenario of wastewater lift stations. And from this, in this meeting, I just like, you know, if we can make a plan, maybe the council member, they should busy couple of our stations. If, if time permits to all of us, maybe this is very, like you know, most of the time, what I feel in my five years of water and wastewater division, we are more, more concerned with water part, but we hardly give any value in wastewater part. And wastewater part is really, really serious for the city. That's why you know, like this is, this is my request, if we, if we can make a visit for at least four or five stations, how we operate, how it goes, then it will be very easy to visualize the things for capital planning.
Are you talking more about you're gonna do some risk assessment as you move this?
No, I guess, I guess we should, we should get a.
I think you're suggesting that the council perhaps do a tour.
To clearly understand how the pumping stations are operated, right? And how, how those pumping stations are critical and what to do, right? And so like, you know, that's why I told you, every, every time, even in the department, whenever there is any issue on the water side, Minister of Environment comes after us right away. But in case of wastewater, they also have little list value or something like that in wastewater part. But if any system fails, the liability is same, right? Whether it's water or wastewater.
So you're saying it's just as serious as the water?
Exactly, that, that should be, and this, you know, unless, I mean, we see the thing on the site itself is very hard to understand, right? But like I said, in Ontario, Kenora, city of Kenora, I have the highest number of pumping stations. And even if you, when you go to any southern Ontario programs and if you say that, okay, city of Kenora has 65 pumping stations, nobody believes that. Because like, yeah, most of the towns of our size, they hardly have two or three pumping stations. And two, and I, two of our stations are coney, that is another issue, right? That's why I, you know, that, that is my request. And if we, if we make a time, can make a time in sometime in June, July, maybe we can, we can have a visit. And the third component under water and wastewater division is wastewater treatment plan. Yeah, this, this year, that year it's centered at 100 building, we, we gave this budget in 2013 and 2014 too. But at that time, there are some issue whether which department is taking care of this and we couldn't finish that project. But that is a safety issue and this year I asked couple of my guys to go here and monitor the gas and it was basically out of the limit. That's why we had to do something and, and I've already received a proposal and we are going to do this in next couple of weeks. That's going to be there. And re-rates and tank maintenance at that. Since up to last year, we never thought this, this thing had that serious, but when Jeff came and when we made a couple of visits and there was a concern of degrading concrete in a couple of our sections in the wastewater treatment plant. And that's why we put this budget and maybe we more budget next year for the same item. But right now, we are just in the assessment stage and I can't say how much money I need for this. So for this year, at least to start something, we propose $8,000.
I think maybe if we just do the highlights of it, rather than getting into the detail of others, because it's not.
Okay, yeah.
The last question.
Yeah, second gear, second gearbox replacement, that is continuity of the last year project. We replaced one last year and this year we are going to replace the second one. And building this renovation, there are a couple of things we have to replace, like doors, windows in the wastewater treatment plant buildings. There are seven or eight buildings and maybe we can do something in two or three this year. And for 2018 and 2019, the same thing, just like some of the budgets, we shifted from last year to 2018 because of the seriousness of the thing and some are proposed in 2019. And vehicles and equipment, like I said, is totally, totally goes under free department and I don't have any comment on this. And this is basically my ex-project. And the fourth item is waterworks and water main program as wastewater collection program on the top. It is the same thing, it is being taken care of by engineering department. And this year, I, I believe we are going to look after one at Sixth Street South, where we had multiple breaks in 2013, 2014. And the second work, I'm not sure what he's going to do. And Murray Line Water Main Investigation, this is for our lake line, which goes underwater. And since 2012, I've never seen, we have monitored that line. That's why I just thought that maybe we should, we should look after those lines, because there are, we have issues of water leakage and waste waste and we don't know where that, that leak is coming from. That's why I put this budget, we have to invite a form from Winnipeg to look after this. And I don't know whether this, this budget is enough or not, but anyway, that, that comes only after, afterwards. Water dispensing, any? This, I think by the end of this week, we'll replace the existing system. And the budget is $35,000, that is for our two booster pumps, water dispensing areas, one is Brinkman and the second one is Crawford. And the fourth item is remote reading capability downtown. This is basically a safety issue from our meter die and in case of downtown, we're just trying to modify our existing meter reading system and $50,000 for that. And the sixth, fifth item under our division is standpipe and mystery stations. We don't have any measure for this year in those three standpipes and five mystery stations. That's why there is no budget. And the sixth item is water treatment plant. Plant generator, the existing generator is working perfectly good, but it is too old, that's why maybe it's a time to replace. That's why the budget is there. Replacement of bulbs is a regular process, like in, in water treatment plant, a couple of bulbs need to be changed every year. That's why I just, just put some random type of budget under this item. But sometimes it is enough and sometimes it just, if it's not enough, then I just spend couple of thousand dollars from operating part to compensate that. The energy savings project plan, right now James, James is looking after this and it occurs in 2013 and 2014 too. But for some reasons, we couldn't carry out that project and this year again, we put that. And the energy savings lighting, we just put this budget to save our energy, total energy cost in our water treatment plant. That's there. And D O treatment unit, we got a consent and proposals last year. And in last two years, we didn't, we didn't receive so much complaints from customers, because the quality was really good. But even then, if we want to work something under consent and proposal, then maybe we need around 300,000 to 400,000 dollars for that. And I put that budget only in 2019. And if that doesn't happen in 2019, maybe we'll move that to 2020. But before that, we are going to toss that, that thing, because it's not that serious and it doesn't have any health and safety issue. That is just a public complaint for a couple of days and we get complaints from probably a dozen people a year. And the top, the top highlights for under capital for 2017 to 2021.
I, I see that in, under waterworks, the water main program, there's huge capital projects starting in 2019, 20 and 21. Can you just give me a bit of an idea what that relates to, what you're looking at in those years?
I think about could, Councilor Sharon, what we were trying to do was recognize that there's a significant infrastructure deficit. And that as we work to increase the amount going into our reserves, we want to start addressing more of the, those underlying programs. I don't know if they've actually been mapped out for three years out at this point. Just a recognition that we are trying to push more knowledge and so that we can start addressing some of that backlog.
Yeah, good, thank you, Karen.
So following up what Sharon started with, the waste collection program for, we'll just use the numbers of 17. The 600 K and the water main program is 600 K. It's basically what we're doing with our paving program. We're setting aside so much money each year. And then as a department and you come back and say, these are the priorities and this is where we're going to spend the money each year. So it's progressively, these are the worst spots and that's where we're going to spend the money. We'll bring the projects forward to you once we determine what the priorities are. Is that basically what it is?
Exactly, yeah, we, we had a couple of meetings and under Jeff, Jeff Marco, myself and a couple of other guys. And we have this there right now, right?
That is correct. It's essentially the dollar value you're marking, we've got projects that will follow.
Okay. And then the renovation of five major stations is basically the same thing. You'll identify in future years, because this year you identified to the Crawford 100 main. For following years, it's a provision and again, you'll determine where priorities lie within using that money. Okay. My last question on the capital is the energy savings for the lighting. When we did the streetlights, there was a, we knew that there was benefit to it, because over a period of years, we would recapture that investment through our energy savings. Is there the same opportunity with this?
Yes, we, we know anecdotally, we don't, I don't have hard numbers for it, but just based on the lighting system that's in there now versus if we went over to the LED, we would be significantly.
Okay, my final question is, we're projected to spend 3.2 million dollars in capital this year. Are there any, or are we pursuing any, is there anything out there where we may be able to find funding opportunities to offset any of these? And is that something that Adam looks for or whoever, but if there's opportunities, we're gonna explore. This is the worst case.
Yep, we do have funding requests in for CWWF for some funding there. I haven't heard a response back on that yet. So yes, we are, we are trying to explore other opportunities for funding work, but we can't.
Right, but we can't reflect it, because it's not known.
Well, because there, I thought there was a formula base, we're getting federal water wastewater.
That's in CWF.
But we haven't heard anything.
We still had to apply for a grant for the special interest in.
And but there, what was our, what were we entitled to in total? Was it 2.4 million or was that a combined?
Oh, that must have been combined, because the number I had in my head was way smaller than that. I thought it was, I, you know, I really want to guess, because I've got many numbers in my head right now. You know, what you should do to those is, is we should jump on Mr. Nalt about that. And get them numbers and then, and get on, we saw this money they're, they're putting out. We haven't seen any.
Yeah.
It's time to see some.
300, in the 300 range for this year, I thought was.
I actually thought that it was higher than that.
Yeah, I thought it was higher, right? We had the numbers and we were talking about them here at one meeting here. Remember when they announced it?
I will get the number and have it distributed to council.
I just know we, yeah, we were looking at doing sewer televising, things like that.
Yeah, we had it on the back of the minute.
What I can tell council is.
And some lining and stuff?
Yeah.
What I can tell council is we did get a communication from the funder indicating that they approved our expression of interest to move forward to the next steps. That doesn't mean we're finalized, but it's just a positive indication that it is moving forward.
Do we, Beeman, you made a good point, do we, and I, yeah, I talked to my peers about this, they, they don't believe it. Six five lift stations, do we, we put that in the application? In all our applications that were unique, it's like our bridges, because of the terrain, we have a unique situation with bridges. We also have a unique situation with lift stations. And do we put that in the application at all?
I'm, I'm going to say probably not, because the application was related to televising the mains, not related to the water stations.
It's something we should maybe add, because it, you know, the better the story you tell, and it's not fabricating, it's the truth. The better the story you tell, then it, it goes up the ladder a lot quicker and they have, politically they go wow.
I agree.
There's 65 lift stations, wow, like that, you can't even imagine. I think, what if they, what city would have they done, Jeff? Eight or 10 or something?
Yeah, nine, 10.
Yeah, like it's bizarre and but every time you go up another hill.
Karen, did you receive any funding last year? Anywhere for Calcutta or Water?
Oh, well, we got all kinds of funding, not for water, wastewater, no.
No, that's all that was talked about, was water and wastewater. So anything we get this year is a bonus.
I didn't want to ignore that we got a number of special events, really into this year. They had the 150, there's a lot of work being done on Birchway area related to the Canada Summer Games and there was also maybe funding avenues. So we did get various funding calls, but not for water and wastewater.
I think that CWF is like one of the scene for sewer water, certainly since I've been.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that is new.
It, well, that's one of the concept, transit, transit, transit. And then they switched this year to water wastewater. And then 2018, there'll be an announcement on what their concentration is on spending their money. And as same as 2019, it would probably be, be the selection year, it would be something that's front and center to all municipalities. So you know, you've satisfied all your vote, get all your votes in the Toronto Metro, all the big cities with the transit. And, and that is to hit the rest of them, to see it closer to the election. I'm not sure it's a game. Now I know for a fact it is.
I think at the end of the day, when, when we look at the budget, and thanks for the overview, is it all boils down to the water, it all leads into the water treatment plant. We've got major accountability as a council on water quality. So we've got to start addressing some of the things you mentioned about the water mains and the pumps. There's no, there's no doubt about your passion on it, because we've got to do it. Because it all boils down to our, our water and our water quality and responsibility.
And, and just feeding back into what Beeman said earlier, I completely agree that right now our primary focus is of course on the water, it needs to be on the water. But as we move forward, there needs to be recognition that there is going to be an increasing requirement for us to meet the same level of standards for our wastewater treatment. We're not there yet, but it's coming and the more we do get ourselves ready for that, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, and I don't feel there's any harm at all stressing the fact that the number of stations that we have to address for small community.
Yeah, that was Beeman, very clear, is we always concentrate on clean water, because that's what we're scared to have, that's what we're getting sued for. It goes a follow, but the thing is, if you start opening up into the river, might be in trouble for that one too. So sometimes you, the unintended consequences of watching one thing two goes.
Exactly, I just want to add one experience with our water and wastewater inspector from ministry. Last year we had, in 2016, we had nine spills from our stations. And whenever ministry looks after the data throughout, they just count the number of spills from the city, right? And ours was really big, nine. Then he called me and he asked me for the explanation. I told, if Rainy River has just one pumping station, how many times do we expect spills from that station? But if nine spills or eight spills came from 65 stations, then there is no logic to compare those nine spills with one spill from Dryden or Rainy River, right?
Or Nyquil store, I mean.
It's very, and like, you know, in 24 hours, we will just have one guy to look after the stations. So if there is a spill, yes, you go there and to report to the ministry. And then he, he agreed on that. But my point is, maybe this year he'll not agree on the same logic, which I give this year, right? That is, that is one of my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think, um, if I could break council attention to appendix number two. And I think really just at a very high level, um, if you look at the front page, this just summarizes, uh, the overall water wastewater operations and you can see there in the twenty seventeen budget. And I think one thing that worth, worth noting here is with the budget conversion, um, you will get in appendix, in this appendix will be the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen actual information in budgets. The twenty fifteen is prior to the last week of appendix. But on this page, we tried to combine the two, uh, because of the high level. Some account conversions didn't really have to produce the rest manually, this page does get produced manually. Um, so you can see their overall system revenues were projecting at roughly eight point five million dollars. Net of expenditures totaling just over six million. We are looking at average income or an estimated income of about two point five million dollars that we can use towards future of our capital expenditures and eventual, uh, system rehabilitation.
Just on the positive side, our revenues have been a little higher than projected.
We, we'd like to, I don't want to say conservatively estimate, but we, we want to be safe rather than sorry for sure. Uh, I think one thing that's worth noting on this page, and if you went through the detail, we, we've included in the budget a part of our recommendations from the DHL with regards to staffing. So that is to increase the complement of water and wastewater operators. I just want to make sure council is aware of that. That has been what we are looking at is, um, hiring one initially and we're looking at the second one down the road, but they are all built into the budget because we did want to accommodate that amount of information.
If I remember right, if I'm on the right budget here, there are, are, uh, wages were above budget? Was that, was that not the right one? Was that because of overtime and stuff?
Actually, it'll be under because, are you, year over year?
Was it this one or was it waste management? I'm trying to remember.
So there's, there's so many budgets and so many budget lines. So one thing, one disclaimer I'm going to put on the wages is in the twenty sixteen budget, if you're comparing twenty sixteen budget to actuals, we would budget for full wages in the twenty sixteen budgets, but in the actuals, staff actually allocate their time out elsewhere. So you really have to look at multiple budgets.
I thought.
Yeah, yeah, that was...
To get the full coverage. Yeah, it, it does make it a little more difficult to work on and, or to look at and compare, but, uh, overall I'd say seem reasonable.
You had to make it complicated. Let's allocate it over.
Actually, it's not.
John Security, no, I'm kidding.
But just to clarify, Karen, I, I was, misquoted. So our operating, it's, it's under the presumption that we've added one additional staff for two thousand, two for seventeen?
Two water and wastewater operators.
Okay.
And that was recommended at the beginning of the study.
So is that something that we'll discuss or...
Right now, if you would like to have that discussion or...
I, I don't need to do it right now, but I'd like to before we leave. Once I hear all the information.
Okay.
Continue, please.
And I think with regards to the water and wastewater system, um, councils have the opportunity to look at the budgets. I don't know if you want us to pull you through in detail on the operating budgets. Normally initially we don't do that at these meetings, but we're certainly happy to do that if you would like.
You can do that on a one-on-one in here, let me tell her if you'd like.
I think the questions I have, I think everybody should, I, I think it's important that if we have questions to go through, we don't need to go line by line. We've identified concerns or questions, we should go through those.
And, and that's what we want to do, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
So we look towards that.
Okay, so my first question, you've kind of already addressed, and it was on, uh, four eleven. Sanitary full-time wages. Um, the budget this year is significantly higher, so that's because of additional staffing.
Correct.
Okay. So if we go to four twelve, the bottom, uh, five expense items all refer to grinder pumps. And because we're going to be dealing with grinder pumps in more detail tomorrow, my question is, if you look at the expenses for the year, they come up to about, say, seventy-five thousand dollars approximately. Is there any other where, place within this budget where there's expenditures identified for grinder pumps? Because the report's going to identify like two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of expenditures, so that's going to be questioned. So if we could have, can you provide?
So where's, or the grinder pumps, like this would be the actual, uh, maintenance without the identifying the fact that we have to vehicle assigned and two staff for doing that work. So that's where you come up with the two hundred and seventy, it's two staff, a vehicle and the, the line that we're seeing on this picture.
And I guess my question then, Jeff, would be more, all those expenses, like we sent out two people to work on grinder pumps and we allocate our time to the grinder pumps. Our vehicle, we allocate to the grinder pumps, any materials or supplies we need. So shouldn't this number be much higher then if it's actually two hundred and eighty?
Uh, uh, I, I see what you're saying and in theory, yes, it should be higher. So these are the actual allocated costs. And I actually thought, I think the other part of it is, but I think Jeff's right, that's how that number is determined. But what this does reflect is ongoing capital replacement at the pumps. So what the related costs are for that, and that probably would increase that number in which I was overall analysis. But you are correct, this is the time, including materials, uh, equipment rental and staff time that was actually allocated to the pumps in twenty sixteen. If you're looking at those numbers. You can see twenty seventeen was up significantly, so hopefully we haven't have built into the budget.
Bert? If you have a question regarding that, go ahead, Bert, you're on this.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered too, I guess I follow in the, the same line with, with Dan's question, maybe I'm repeating it, but with the two hundred and, uh, for discussion purposes, two hundred and seventy-five for grinder, grinder pumps, it would be good if we could work that backwards, um, just to show. Um, I know it's, it's not a, it's not an easy task to do, but if there's items in there, just to show it, it just substantiates discussion and debate.
I've overlooked my standard of things, just I know that I have a problem.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Sorry.
Yeah, but if we could, if we could work that, I forgot, I apologize.
No, it's, it's all right.
If we could somehow work it backwards just to show that these are the, these are the costs. I'm not doubting it, but it's just to show.
So the, where, where the cost of coming from, that two hundred and seventy thousand was the cost for two full-time staff, a vehicle. Uh, and approximately ninety thousand on the year, materials and supplies. And that is where that is coming from. If we are not looking after grinder pumps, which isn't an option because with our contract, we do have to look after the grinder pumps. Um, we have to have these staff, we have to have them available to go and work on these on a, on a minimum basis. Whatever failure occurs, we're going to be able to dispatch staff. So it's looking at, takes two people to do that work, takes a vehicle to do that work. That's what the cost is to be able to look after those pumps. If we didn't have those pumps on the list, then we wouldn't have to have as many staff, we wouldn't have to have that dedicated vehicle. This is where it takes, we'll go and look after that work.
So based on what Jeff's saying, we've identified the two additional staff within the budget, but we really haven't allocated that. We've only showing seventy thousand dollars in wages.
This is, this is just looking at it strictly from what twenty sixteen, so in other words, we took staff from our normal complement to go and do this work. And their time was tracked just on doing that work and that work alone. We didn't have the grinder pumps to look after, that would be one thing, but we do, we've got to have two staff dedicated to being able to look after those grinder pumps.
So...
That's where we're going.
But I think what I'm saying is...
Go ahead.
You've identified two additional staff. And so we're going to say, for budget purposes, there are two people are going to be totally dedicated to the grinder pumps. So it's just that, those wages are within...
Right, that's total, within the group, that's right.
But we just haven't allocated it to grinder pumps.
So this seventy thousand dollars...
Would actually show like one fifty or one forty or whatever.
Right.
Whatever is appropriate now, I would be remiss if I didn't say when those two staff don't need to work on the grinder pumps, they certainly be otherwise voided.
Yeah, but you still have to bill them somewhere in the budget.
Right. Um, one of the things we did this year with our, because we're using a new allocated wage module, um, we didn't go into every line and try to allocate the wages if it's in the water and wastewater budgets, especially if it's, so this is the wastewater budget, it's part of the overall wastewater budget where the staff are allocated. You may not see a whole lot of allocated, um, pay from the water and wastewater staff because they're already in that department. So that's why you don't see any allocated pay to that line.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I guess that, that's kind of what I was trying to get at, Jeff, was just, and I think you've identified within a, in a broad sense, it's just a grinder pump budget. You had staffing, you had vehicle, uh, you got supplies. I guess that's what I was trying to get at.
It, it, essentially what we did was just look at what, what it costs us for two staff members, a vehicle for being able to do this work.
Because that's, that's, that's the question the public asks, okay, well, show me.
What else?
Which is a fair question. Okay, thanks.
How many grinder pumps? About three hundred and fifty?
Roughly.
Yeah, roughly two hundred and fifty.
But only sixty-five pump installations.
Maybe if we install, uh, install one pumping system between Dravik Crawford and Trailer Park, we can get a way of probably forty, forty-five grinder pumps.
Yeah.
How much would that cost though?
I don't want to do that.
I just, I'm just curious.
Well, the guy is, is saying something, I don't know, like six million.
Oh, okay. We're good.
He's just, he's just playing with it, Sharon.
The reason the grinder pumps went in was that it would have been prohibitive to put in...
Yeah, okay.
A gravity sewer system. So it, it was the best option for the residents, the alternative for the residents would have been a much more expensive, uh, proposition.
I'm sorry, how many, how many grinder pumps did you take in?
Three fifty.
Well, three fifty.
Yeah.
So yours, my math right on your, um, your initial twenty dollars that brings in what, eighty-four thousand? Uh, well, you, you, essentially you're, what you're looking at is, is, yeah, it's basically, it's part, part sort of what actually is costing us, yes.
Okay, so just for clarification, right now the budget includes the additional staff, but it does not include the proposed eighty-four thousand because we've not made any determinations.
That's correct, right, thank you.
Which would show the right number.
So that was after a couple of years, but I don't, I'm out of work, I'm not out of work because we're going to talk about this tomorrow, but good to get current about it all. It's basically in two years' time, what you were suggesting was then you would have a better idea of how much some staff were used and where the actual cost really was. So maybe it's, maybe you're, maybe you're sufficient, maybe you're not sufficient, two years from, from the end.
I think the last discussion on this was November twenty fifteen, something like that.
Yeah, I, I believe so, and there's been, the, the father's point, think that, uh, Patty has on this and, uh, yeah, it's been lots of discussion and...
So, so is the pedal's behind you.
I, I know that, I, I feel a, uh, eyeballs springing a hole in my head.
John, you can come out and sit beside Jeff.
But yes, that is the reason why we suggested that it be repeated two years, right?
Okay. Okay, hey, have questions, Matt? I was, I have some questions regarding the overall system. So...
Overall.
Talk to me about water delivery. How many customers do we actually have that we deliver water to approximately?
Have they changed that? Um, it fluctuates, uh, seasonally, but it can be up to, on a high, probably about eighty-five and on a lower end, between sixty, I guess, sixty and eighty-five, I guess would be a guess.
That's a lot.
Okay.
And at a high season, of course, it's summer, summer, yeah.
And the, I have to apologize because I, I was flipping through the, uh, the revenue side has clearly identified what we get for tanker delivery. How do we make out, is it costing us money to still deliver tanker to...
With, with only eighty-five, uh, addresses? I, I haven't done the analysis, but I really...
Actually, in, uh, I devised a rate in twenty thirteen. If you can see, yeah. Before that, that was totally, we are losing business. We're, we're losing a lot of money from that segment. And at that time, we just crossed the breaking line.
Okay.
What I believe today, we are still losing money on that side.
Well, uh, when you say we're losing, is it significant, is it less than ten thousand a year, like?
Right now, I can't say exact figure, but yeah, I can, I can come up with that value if you, you...
Yeah, even if it's a proxy, just so we have a general idea what it's... Can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was it your thought that we review the impression on that?
Well, I just, I'd like, personally, I'd like to know, you know, is it, if we're subsidizing, how much are we, at what rate are we subsidizing it? And over the eighty, sixty and eighty-five, sixty-five, eighty-five customers, how much would that be approximating on a annual basis?
Probably coming up to be four years, since we, and that was to bring it up to the rate mark, so we probably will do for another...
Four years.
That, that was why I was asking if you wanted a, you know, a report on it for, from that perspective or just, just a...
If that's what it leads into, Jeff, but right now it's more, I'm curious, I'd like that information. So when I went through the notes, um, I found it really interesting on page ten, the watershed source protection comments. Now, some of them we have control over or may have control over and others we don't. The two that really jumped out at me were, um, were the ones that jump out at me, the septic systems on Coney Island, the rap portage sewage leak and more, and the pesticides from Canora Golf Club because they're all upstream of our water intake. Um, you know, if something, uh, accidental spill from a running train and that, um, they're more past the water treatment plant. So I think it said that, um, what was the comment? City should look to develop a plan and share responsibility towards source protection. So is, I would really like to see us continue on, like, start that process and look at it. Whether it's a long-term plan with, um, you know, depending what happens when we look at expansion or if we do, can we bring in, uh, so rap portage and can use our system down the way? Um, can we work with the golf course to determine, you know, what are they actually putting on the golf course? How much is a factor of, uh, concern is it? And then the, uh, Coney Island ones, I guess it's more of a health unit issue that we need to work with. But I think it's important that we, it's been identified, I think it's a really good comment and that, um, we should be, uh, following up with that.
One of the things on, on this too, and I have this discussion table, is, is, uh, this is a big part of the GTA, but, um, most of these things are, as you pointed out, are outside of our boundaries. Who's responsible?
But I think when we're talking about...
Some, somewhere within, I mean, the golf course, but some things are outside of our boundaries, who's responsible for that?
But we need to initiate those discussions, um, especially when we're partners with the golf course and Coney Island is, are our rate pairs. So, and we have partners of the health unit to look at those, so, you know, the railway, that's another, another ball of wax, but, uh, those three, especially because they're before the intake of our water, I think we should really spend some time on that.
For me, at the end of the day, we look at our water quality and these all significantly impact our water quality. And that's what we're responsible and liable for. So it all feeds into that one system. One way or another. And I think the other one that, and, but maybe it's, it's, Dave, maybe you can answer, it prompted a thought about the, the golf courses. Uh, what, what's the impact of beauty day golf course? Would that have a significant impact on Black Sturgeon?
On Black Sturgeon, yeah. There's, uh, water testing down...
Oh, no, I know that.
They do again, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had to do. Okay.
Anybody else? The only, um, I guess we're just going to get into the general questions, uh, anybody else on general questions? One that I think I brought this up before is, um, um, equipment, vacuum truck, um...
You back on the capital, Dave?
Yeah.
You back on the capital, yeah.
Yeah, the, the vacuum truck, uh, correct.
Yeah, the, the vacuum truck, uh, there, there is, there is kind of like, I guess, how many hours would we put on that vacuum truck in here?
I don't know if that information is here, but we'll get it.
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact figure, but normally, whenever we have any issues in our systems, we just call, build that truck. Yeah, our, our equipment is letting, it's small, right, and you can't keep up the thing. I, I, I can have that, if we need that.
Yeah, I was, I kind of wondered if we could sort of do a cost analysis of, would it be, should we really buy another vacuum truck, or should we just, you know, hire the companies that are out there? Is there like, what's sort of, is sort of our breaking point? I mean, I, I know when we did the, and Rory would have been here for that, when we did the blue box system, for instance, because that was contracted out. And we thought, we realized we can do it cheaper in-house, and so we took it in-house, and so it could be something similar, maybe, once you do the cost, maybe it's, maybe it's cheaper to contract it. Maybe we don't, you know, I mean, how much do we, if we're using it all the time, like, if you're putting, you know, a few thousand hours a year on the truck, well, then we probably need to truck, but it's just sort of, it's just a question, so. Anybody else?
That's projected for twenty nineteen, isn't it, Dave?
Uh, eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, next year. Yeah, twenty eighteen. Overall, I mean, I'm, just thank you for keeping us out of jail.
All right, for me, that's a caution, you can't take it for granted, because that's what we're critically liable for, is the water and the water quality. And we've, we've got a number of folks with summer places and lake residents that do their best to address water quality, so it's a good partnership.
I think sometimes, in my experience working for the city in town of Kuwait, and being on council, is when we look at budgets, we tend to look at one year. You know, even though it's a long, a lot of these are long-term operating decisions, so. And I go back to, and it's not for discussion, because we've already passed the rate, but we really need to be cognizant when we pass those rate increases, is what's the long-term effect down the way. Because, so when we look at a budget, I would urge us all to think beyond just, it's sometimes just, oh, let's just get through this year, and we'll worry about next year, next year. No, because what we do now sets, it sets us on a path for what we're going to do down the road.
And I think in addition to that, Dennis, wherever we can is to try and look, look, look at it beyond the term of council too, because it, it's more than a four-year cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah, significant. Although we can't bind another council to it, but we can sure make some solid direction.
One of the other things too, in the, the notes is, the loop in the dead end water base, of course, became a big issue in twenty fourteen, with the, you know, extreme cold weather. Do we have a, a, an estimate, like, say if all of a sudden the government come up with a bunch of money? Were the, the ones that we, would be priorities, and I think a lot of them too, that are, that could serve as other pieces of property doing the loop? And, and kind of a, 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 a cost of what, say, the, how many loops is there?
Yeah, we, we have identified all those dead ends, and the thing that maybe we can, we can just ask engineering department to have a unit cost, I think we can come up with some, I don't know.
No big emergency, just something to have, but all of a sudden, then, you know, say next year in twenty eighteen, the federal government says, we find water and wastewater a big issue, because of, of, you know, the importance of it. We're going to pump a bunch more money into water and wastewater instead of bridges and roads or something, then, just so we're, we're, we're prepared, or whatever the, it could be twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, whatever, but. The opportunity comes where we can get federal money and provincial money, it would be awesome, to get some of them ones done, and, and I know the, we, we put a lot of stress on the system at times.
We have the, we have the list, we just have to multiply the length by the unit cost.
You make it sound so simple.
No, it's very easy, very simple.
Everything's simple for you.
Maybe for you, not for me. Okay, council, any other questions? Comments, David?
I guess if I could, just from a logistical perspective, and thank you, Councilor Dan, for talking about the long-term. What will happen is council will be looking at the next quarter and wastewater increase before the next budget comes through, normally that, usually that happens. And I, the rule we set probably is to suggest that council look at not only twenty eighteen, but twenty nineteen, because it's very challenging for a new council to come in and approve a rate increase as they're walking in the door, which has to happen before they come in in December, it has to happen in December, they have to take effect for January. So, not looking for that discussion today, I just want you to be aware of that request will become.
Yes, yeah.
And if that's the case, perhaps I could refer council onto this all waste budget.
Are we okay with this? There's obviously some questions that we, one of the very things we want to look at, but.
Good.
There you go.
Okay. Um, just, and I'm sure you've all seen on the table again, but there's a report coming forward, moving these budgets forward, so that we and Makesh can start looking at that, or if not. So we're trying to get it first through the council.
One, one thing before we move off this, and it's going to go right into Makesh's department, is the, with the things, the changes that are coming in waste management over the next years, and. The opportunities around, around waste, sewage, and energy, and, and things like that. I just want to throw it out, because there's some, there's some things that are out there, and probably going to be some granting opportunities. Potential producing power from the methane or whatever, I don't know if methane comes out of the machine, but there's some, going to be some opportunities around there as we get more and more into this. Capturing methane and stuff, and is there something I read even thinking up, you know, to, to have a small pilot plant that could maybe power some of the systems over there, I don't know. But I know it's, it's on the radar right now, and they're talking about it a lot provincially, and it's going to become all depending, provincial election next year, or might all disappear. Who knows? You don't know, but just something I can think of, and if there's some opportunities there, it is.
Just, I just, one comment, Beeman, thanks for your presentation, thanks for your passion. And I think that the underlying thing that we haven't mentioned, and it's very clear when you look across the country, is the impact of climate change, which significantly impacts our water, so. The pumping stations are critical. I didn't realize we had sixty-five pumping stations. And how long have I been here? Should never admit that, I guess, eh? So, thanks.
Well, you go through so many numbers, and I knew it was astronomical, but I remember having a conversation with my peers in Toronto, and they didn't believe me. You have the number, they forget it.
Okay, so if we can launch into the solid waste budgets, before I take you to appendix nine, I actually like to take you to page nine. Because the picture sometimes is better than a thousand words. And I think it's important for council to see what's happening with solid waste reserves. You can see there, high in twenty sixteen, and I believe that's from project sharing boards. Which, because you'll see a number, a higher number of projects in twenty seventeen, however, if you look from twenty seventeen indirectly, you'll see a gradual, sorry. Solid waste, yes, reserves, and that is concerning to administration from the perspective of, what we really need to be doing is looking at putting dollars away towards future landfill cost replacement. There's a significant project that we end up deleting because we need to do some more research in before we bring that forward, however, had that project not been deleted, those reserves would have been well under a million dollars by twenty twenty-one. So, one of the recommendations that will come forward tomorrow is that we look at a minimal best review of our tipping fees. I believe it's time to update our weigh take fees, the two dollars, we've had this for a long time, I think it's probably a reasonable amount, but the tipping fees definitely, we need to really reevaluate where this is at, and determine if we need to put additional dollars in there. If you flip to appendix one, you will see the same thing in the dollar format, so you look along the bottom line, almost two million dollars in two thousand and seventeen, and then slowly dropping off, one point eight, one point, sorry, one point nine, one point five, and then down to one point two. With the change between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one not even mentioned, to be quite frank. So.
You have forgotten that by twenty fifty, there will be no more landfills.
Well, that would be possible, if there is.
That what the government said?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, same like, no.
No more landfills in twenty fifty.
So we only have to protect this up to twenty fifty, is what you're saying?
Yeah, thirty-one years, that would pretty, pretty much get us there.
Yeah, our land is thirty-one more years, so.
Yeah, I have a whole list of questions, but since you brought it to light, I noticed that our operating projected surplus, that's why we're, well, it's a combination, we're spending money on capital projects. But whereas solid waste, or waste, our groundwater rates are going up every year, which keeps us, here, we're actually, the operating projected service or surplus is basically dropping thirty-five thousand dollars every year, to the point where we're only going to have an operating surplus of three hundred thousand, so that takes into what you said, what we need to look at the rates and determine. Otherwise, we're not going to have that money available. So, and I would assume that is because when we did the projections, we left the rates as they are.
Correct.
But we know our expenditures, whether it's energy, whether it's wages, those are going to continually grow up, so are roads, our profit. On page nine, just while we're here, people have a little, we've talked about the.
Are you landing there with them?
Yeah, the narrative. I thought it was in here. Maybe not, but you talked about future landfill, and somewhere in here, it says that the future new landfill will be approximately five to seven. And that would be basically the brand-new site based on current technology, and whether it's building, equipment, that's what we need in order to get a new site up and operating at that, just, correct?
I, I wasn't part of the most, I, there's a lot of work involved.
Okay, so, I think that one's kind of, the one I, it's the million dollars for the closure, and that's just, that does include monitoring, that's just capping and seeding, correct?
Yeah, the fighting gap.
Yeah, so in addition to that, we have ongoing monitoring, just like we do with the, the old landfill. Okay, thank you.
However, having said that, I believe we could rely on the for the closure costs for the monitoring. I'm going to have to check on that, because it could be that it also includes the, these closure costs, so I will call upon that.
Thank you.
But we, we have to monitor, try, like, was it twenty-five years? So we're getting close to the end of that, and then we no longer have to monitor.
I think it's twenty twenty in the report somewhere.
The, the other thing here, you know, before we get into a product, is, is the unknown, and, and organics are going to be out of the landfill within, what, by twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Uh, and you're, you're, like, you're, there's so many things that are changing here in the next, and I don't, I don't think, no matter which government gets in next year, I don't think that's going to change a lot, because I've, I've heard them all sort of in support of the, of some of these changes, so it's really, I mean, I like it, I think it's great, it's, it's, I'm another of these idiots that believes there's zero waste as possible. And you can, you know, have a place for everything, so there's so many unknowns in here, if they do.
When you say organics are wasted by twenty twenty-five, I, we've looked into doing organics backwards with the city Winnipeg, I mean, the city Winnipeg was a seventeen million dollar plant that we were going to have to get all of it if we wanted to do that. It has to be done in vessel, it is very, very expensive, so unless the province is coming up with some significant funding, you can't just accomplish that, there would be no, producers, so many things changing here, where the producers are going to be responsible, Makesh, for.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, it's.
What year was that, Jeff? What year was that, when you guys were looking into your organics?
Uh, that would have been twenty, twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, yeah, okay. And you, and the, and the landfill, Brady is completely engineered, isn't he?
Yeah. Uh, well, okay, now, cave you, yes, because we, there at that facility, they have so much clay underneath, and it's solely, we don't have a liner per se. As most landfills would be required to, because you've got so much like, normally, an engineered landfill would mean that you actually have a line just to have. But we do have our gas collection and leachate collection and everything else there, so, yeah.
I remember it was because of, it's a sour clay or something?
Well, it's, it's the depth of it and the transmissivity of the clay itself, so they, it, it means the requirement, one centimeter to the, God, I can't remember what it is, I think seventeen or something, that it has to be able to basically be impenetrable. And then below that, we have a rock to shackle for, so it was a safe site, too well. Here, in the future, we're going to have to definitely go with, with aligned landfill, initially, it's just, but, that said, I do think, well, Frank and I have been out to, to our landfill, and I looked at it before he left, and I do think there'll be an opportunity for us to look at expansion where we are, as you have, so, with a line system and.
I remember when we were first looking at that, it was, well, all landfills were controversial, even ship and I wouldn't pick the Brady for them years, it was about controversial, but it was because of Silver Lake, and actually, when you look at it, actually, and actually, the gentleman that just left was with M O E at the time, and it's actually, the, Pete and Marsh and everything's actually really good for, for landfill. So it was kind of a real learning experience back then.
I bet, glad I wasn't on that column.
You want to see people get up in arms?
Yeah.
I know you were mentioning greenhouse gas collection, and, and one thing for our landfill that would be interesting to see, I, I think because of the amount of C and D that we have going out there, it'd be questionable what our generation showed out there yet. By comparison to the C and D, the, the organics we have going out there is relatively small. So, and that's the organics, of course, they generate your, your methane, so it's, we'd have to see, you, you can test them, I mean, that, that's easy enough to do, we can certainly look at it down the road.
Also, make a smaller plan, I mean, technology's come a long way, when we were looking at that, Rory, you remember, we're looking at a, at a, your organic, a lot of, mostly, a lot of your waste, your household was going in, there was a plant down in Almeron, that we toured, there was a few of them that were doing it, turning it into fertilizer. Most of them shut down, because just, they were so expensive, like, to run, and they were selling the fertilizer, but it was just, got too expensive, it was too expensive, but some, they're now starting to come back in smaller.
That composting, you're talking about composting bio waste, the biosolids?
Yeah.
From the, yes, and in fact, actually, Brady has gotten into doing that as well, so there's a good example there that we could go and take a look at, but, you know, the, the problem you run into, if you're just doing a leafy yard waste, composting, that's relatively easy to do, fairly inexpensive, and we can produce a reasonably good quality product to sell back to the public. If you get into biosolids, the importance of that heat generation, kill off pathogens, increases, and there's a lot more testing involved, you have to stockpile material for a minimum of two years before you can sell it to the public, so there's more involved with that, but there is still good opportunity to look at it, for sure.
I see that we didn't get the, just the grinder, that gas capital project last year.
That's the, that's the large project that is on hold right now, we're going to look into, into that more.
But we're still looking to do something like that?
We are, I, I, I just want to make sure the numbers are on before we, before we run.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Sorry, I got a little sort of out of order there, as things are coming to my head. Where are we, boss?
It'll be time to go to the pen and explore, and maybe Mikesh could walk us through the highlights of the capital.
Right, thank you. So, like, I have like a, like a three heading here, one as transfer station and one as scannable area landfill and solid wood, because of the equipment. I don't, I didn't have that many on the transfer facility. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, uh, I was planning to pave, uh, the recycle, like, the canopy in front, in front of the canopy at the recycle like area. So, so, so we proposed like thirty, thirty grand for that one in two thousand seventeen. And like, there are a couple of some projects at the landfill. As per like, as per our landfill master plan, we have to develop the landfill, so we're in the process of that one. So, one was the, one, one is the construction of retention basin. Like, we have to make, like, there, there, there's a provision to make a retention basin at the landfill just to collect the surface water. We had that built, so, uh, we have put like a fifty grand to construct that one. And now, we have made an application for the ministry, uh, to get gravel pit just beside the landfill. So that we can use the gravel as a cover materials. So, we have studied that one, so we put like one hundred and twenty thousand for that one. And we also, we have also planned to build, to construct a five brake road, like a kind of particular road in the landfill. And we have put like a one hundred thousand for that one. And we don't have like any camera at the landfill, so, so we have a plan to put five or six camera at the landfill so that you can see what is going on, right? And last time, like, there was a break, last time, somebody broke the garage, garage building. And, uh, and we didn't have anything like, you know.
Were they trying to steal garbage?
Like, I don't like that, they.
Right, you want to break into a landfill.
Yeah.
You ever hear of the bulldozer?
Yeah.
It's quite fun.
Yeah, he drove.
It takes something to do.
Sober or drunk?
No, actually, when I worked there.
Yeah, he drove the main gate and he, he tried to hit the, like, garage, uh, door, right? And, and like, uh, we, and cops were there and like, uh, cops was asking for like cameras kind of thing. Like, we said, okay, we don't have any camera, so now we're, like, we'll keep that camera over there. So, there's like thirty, thirty five thousand for that one. And like, well, we'll buy some like, uh, equipment, uh, we'll buy a garbage trailer. So, there is one hundred thirty thousand dollars for garbage trailer. And we need one pickup truck, so there is only ten thousand, it's treading, it's a new, not a new truck. Uh, we're getting one old truck from the, uh, freight to be used at the landfill.
It's new to you. It's new to you.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is new for me, but it's old one.
So, it's a garbage, it's really a garbage truck?
Yeah, because it's a garbage department, so. Uh, and I, we, we have like a very old, uh, motor boat to go for, to pick up garbage from Koni, so.
What, what size engine is that on the boat, you know?
I don't know, like, I haven't seen that one. I'm not sure. A small boat, but it's not loud, it's a very small boat.
This fourteen thousand will buy you.
That's not enough, I thought.
Probably a hundred, over a hundred horsepower.
So, this is the Mike numbers or my?
About a hundred horsepower, is it really?
I thought it was a thousand dollars.
Thousand and a horsepower, I'd say about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty horsepower.
To move an e-garbage truck, I think.
Well, yeah, that's the order.
If you've ever been out there in the rain in the fall, you want to get off fast.
And you wanted to see a boat come back from there full.
This is, like, this is the Mike's number, so I think that's like Mike's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't trust Mike.
Careful.
Don't tell him that. Now he knows what he's doing.
Yeah, and we're also planning to buy a new roll up truck, like, our one roll up truck is very old. We have two roll up truck, one is like a very old, so we're trying to buy a new one. So, there is like a two hundred and thirty thousand for the roll up truck in two thousand seventeen. Like, in two thousand eighteen, like, uh, like, uh, we have like a fifteen, a forty yard screen at the roll up truck. We have like total fifteen, forty yards screen, and they are getting very old, like, now we are repairing that one and we're running that, like, we are using that forty yards screen. And in two thousand eighteen, we're planning to buy three, uh, forty yard screen, right? And we have put like fifty thousand for the landfill development. And in two thousand eighteen, we are also buying a recycle collection truck, recycled truck. And there is one hundred seventy five thousand for that one. And we are replacing the bulldozers at the landfill. And that is for two hundred thirty thousand dollars for that one. In two thousand nineteen, there is a plan to, to develop new recycle depot because the existing depot is very, like, very congested. Existing recycle depot is very congested, right? So, we have a plan to develop, uh, we have to do something. Because like, uh, we have to do something in so, in summer, like, it's very crowded, right? So, we are thinking to develop the north, like, we have a property at the north side from the scale building. We have a property, so we're planning to, we're planning to develop that area and put new recycle depot over there. So, so from that, we put like a three hundred thousand, uh, just to develop that depot. And like, you know, like, uh, now we have only one, like, uh, scale in the scale building, we have only one weighing scale. And like, uh, now we're thinking that one scale is not enough due to high traffic. You'll see a lot, long queue. So, so we have one in inbound, like, so we have to put one outbound scale on the same building. So, that might help to reduce the traffic going through the scale.
Is the congestion, sorry, Mikesh, is the congestion higher in the summer than with, um?
Yeah, a hundred question, yeah.
So, it's actually seasonal then?
Because like our C and D, like, our, our garbage, like, quantity of garbage will go off, you know, in like, uh, especially our construction and due to the waste. That will go dramatically off in summer. So, you'll see lots of like, uh, traffic, right? And we're still like, we have only one scale, so we're still, uh, working through that scale, but it's too congested. You'll see a lot, like, if you go on Sunday, you'll see long queue over there. So, so there is a plan to put, uh, in the scale at the landfill, so we have like one hundred fifty thousand dollars for that one. Uh, one of the guy, and like, uh, one of the guy's collection truck is very old, so. So, we have to lift that truck, so there is two hundred thousand for that one. And like a highway tractor, like, this highway tractor is used to just to haul the cycle to invade from Canada and ride and ride. And for that, we have one hundred sixty five thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen. In, in two thousand twenty, uh, there is, there is no plan at the transfer station, but there's, like, we have a plan to replace transfer station loader. One coming girl truck and recycle trailer. We have to buy lots of equipment over there. And in two thousand twenty one, a garbage trailer and cycle trailer. Uh, we're thinking to replace the god, the cycle trailer and garbage trailer in two thousand twenty one. So then the highlight of the capital.
For the, um, the retention basin and the fire pro, are those based on, like, the ministry sets guidelines on how we're supposed to operate our landfill? Or is that part of the?
So, the retention basins are, uh, the, uh, fire road that we're proposing in there is actually, uh, from a, just good management perspective. So that if we ever did have a fire in the waste, we're not having that forest on, aside us, that we can get vehicles in there. There is a requirement for a peripheral road, but that was intended to be just simply around the active area. Uh, so that's, uh, it's important not to confuse the two. This is a peripheral road, but this is more with the intent of having access for fire animals to get a bit of a fire burn.
Okay, the aggregate, where did we get the aggregate now?
Over that.
Yeah, like, uh, now we're getting a gift from, from landfill, right? Like, we're dealing some, I get from the, beside the landfill out of the.
Okay, so eventually we just.
Yeah, and that, and part of the, part of the cover we'll get from the, uh, like, uh, contaminated waste. Contested, they bring like contaminated waste, we're using that as a cover material, right? So.
Part of the aggregate, though, we bring up there for the road base, uh, last year we were doing some construction, so it's been all weathered road going up to the active area. Uh, that material was brought in from a quarry.
So, based on the projected materials within this pit that we're, we want to purchase, do we have an idea?
We're not purchasing a pit.
Or?
It's application.
Okay, so we'll be able to access this aggregate? So, is there sufficient material that would?
Yes.
Oh, more than one.
It will last us, yes.
Okay. And my final comment would be, how come this sewer and water gets half ton trucks that are worth thirty eight thousand? And you only get one with ten?
No, the thing is like.
When we're done with it, we just take the key out and push it down.
And you'll have to explain it, it's just.
No, the one thing, the one thing, like, sometimes we have to send like three or four operator to the landfill. Three operator, two operator, four operator to the landfill. We have like a half ton truck with only two seats, right? So, I asked Mike, okay, Mike, I need some, like, I need another truck, and Mike told, okay, this, this year I will give Mike truck, so Mike will give his truck.
For ten grand, it's fantastic, the front truck and there's no.
This is a world truck, so.
Thank you.
Um, Mikesh, when you talked about the, um, eventually getting another scale there and linking them together, I, I don't know the logistics of that and leave that to you. But even the recycling area, um, seasonally, it's, it's busier and Dan, you, you worked there as well. Are we looking at, uh, if we, if we get a new scale, like, entrance and exit more for the traffic flow?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it, it's a very popular place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, like even on the weekends with, with, out of season. It's, it's a great asset to have it for, there's no excuse to not recycle what you have a vehicle.
Yeah, like in winter, like, our existing recycle area is enough, but in summer, it is very congested.
Yeah.
You know, so like, you know, maybe after two or three years, you know, that will not accommodate all, like, the public. So, we have to, like, we have to see some alternative of that, and that's why we're thinking to put one, the scale that will have the traffic. And to expand up to like a concert new recycle area, just north of the scale building.
I just sense is, uh, over the next few years, there's going to be, uh, more and more recycling and like the electronics and, um.
Hazardous waste can.
That giveaway area and all that sort of stuff, I think that, that's going to significantly increase. People put more demand on the, on the apartments, so.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the capital or? Um, then I guess the last place we will take you is the pen and explore. And it goes to the front page, and it's just about the very high level of the operations. And again, we're trying to align the two budget platforms, just to make sure we're covering this case here, like.
I noticed, I noticed this V I O has tabs in their budget binder.
Have you guys noticed?
Some of us just have to read through the pages. I'm kidding.
I only have one tab, you're not tabbed through. Right on, long the sitting pair of fingers, you know that.
Then they also pay for check.
Or.
Sign for check.
Careful.
Go through and tab the pages we deem important as councillors.
So, there you go, right on. Should I give you binders and stickies? Uh, so just at a high level, twenty seventeen, we're looking at close to two point two million dollars in operating revenues. And that offset with close one point seven million in combined expenditures. Shows, uh, net operations is about four hundred and fifty six thousand, as council and Dan had pointed out earlier on this meeting. Um, when you look at twenty seventeen and move beyond that, you'll see an eventual evolution of net income being generated in these operations. Right now, we don't have any authority to even do a possible living increase or anything. I mean, as council hadn't even discussed any rate increases, we haven't put anything in the budget, other than we're like, next, we do need to do that. And that's something that we'll be working on in the future, so, and something we'll come back to council on, working at these.
Do you have the operating budget, do you think, Karen, or when it comes forward?
No, it, it'll come forward after these budgets are approved. I didn't want to hold at least.
Yeah, I just.
I was starting to do that, John's here Monday, I can wait till he's here.
And he can take the responsibility for it. Way to start him off.
Actually, responsibility lies with you, councillor Smith.
I know, Buck stops here.
That's just a recommendation, we have to approve the rate, so. We'll be shipped.
I, I, I find it interesting, and I can't remember how many years ago we put in the bag tags and, um, how controversial it was, and now we're, we're going to revisit. A number, yeah, a number of municipalities are, are just, are still struggling to, to look at, like, city of Thunder Bay, I understand it is. Yeah, yeah, and, and they've had debates and, um, although it was difficult when it was done. We're, it's, it'll be difficult when you, when we look at, uh, raising the rates, but we're kind of ahead of the curve from that sort of stuff because the process has been implemented.
They're, yeah.
And.
Everybody's got a problem.
Yeah, but other municipalities are struggling, but I, I would think even like major cities like Toronto and that, there's, uh, major issues. But it's something we're going to have to tackle.
The thing is, it worked. It, it worked and diverted, and after.
Yeah.
Couple of years yellow screen, people use, put out five bags of garbage, you'll put out one. Just makes you accountable. I think some of the changes are coming from eventually, if anybody's, nobody's got any choice on all they do.
Which has put an increase in.
But there are some, like, a private contractor in Canada, they are, they are also selling, like, they are also taking the contract garbage and their garbage, like, there is, bag tag is also two dollar, right? So, if we increase our bag tag price, maybe like, uh, lots of people, they will go for that private contract.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think you, you're a reward tonnage factory.
Tipping fees, yeah.
The tipping fees is the most thing, yeah.
But, but Mikesh, that happened with private operator, theirs was lower, but it came up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Um, so again, just like we did with water, waste water, it's not our intent to break these records. I don't know, solve these budgets, but if you have questions, you'd be happy to throw a best of those or get the information if we don't have it here, but it's.
Any other questions, councillor? Yes, of course. Some of them are just.
You should know all this, man, you should run.
I know I didn't, but there's been a lot of positive changes over the years, right? We started with recycle.
Yeah.
When I started, these stuff, those blue bins across the wall.
Yeah.
And then the loader had to go across, empty the recycle and bring it back across the scale, and it was, there's, there's just so many positive changes back. Our curbside collection, we just split the cost fifty fifty between recycle and.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, the, um, we haul recycling for the city of Dr, or, you know, the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, how, what's the cost recovery on that? Is it so much per?
Per trip.
Transport?
Yeah, per trip, yeah, like, like, we have like a thousand, no, a thousand dollars per trip. Okay, so like that includes everything, like, we have just calculated that one, that includes like a fuel cost, that include like a, uh, wages. Like, that includes maintenance costs, everything, and there is no like any benefit, like, it is just like this, there is no, that was benefit for us, right? But there's no loss.
Total cost.
So, that will keep like our, like, our operators job, you know?
So, does it, like, we're looking, I think it was twenty twenty, we're new recycle. So, do we factor in, you know, future purchases into that rate? Or do we just absorb a hundred percent of the cost of any new equipment that's required to haul?
Well, we use that equipment ourselves, so we need the equipment anyway.
Right, but that's always, I'm just asking, Jeff, is, do we allocate any of that to drive it some, like, through?
Yeah, the, the new cost of equipment, I, I don't have the length of time here to know the answer to that, so I'm not making too far.
All right.
If I could, just for clarification, that is in the usual pretty budget for a lot here.
Yes.
And, okay, and just when you look here, you see the new recycle collection truck, it's fifty percent of the cost, the other fifty percent should be in the useful account, whole budget that was previously.
Yeah, all I'm looking at, Karen, is the rate that we're charging dry and is based on, like you said, our operating costs.
Cover our cost question.
But are they also gonna, are they also gonna give the cost of two hundred and fifty thousand for replacement? Are we building that into?
Yeah, we could look into where.
Yeah, but, but we have like, okay, we had, we did that cost, like, just to buy a truck or whatever, in that, uh, like, it's ours for drying.
Is it factored in?
Yeah, we have put some like, you know, for a trip, we have to put, like, you know.
Perfect, okay.
And, and they have like their one trailer, like, uh, and we have like our one trailer, we have three trailers, we have one and, like, they bought one and we have one, two trailer, right? And like, we have a truck that goes here and there, right? We have all kinds of, you know.
Okay, and the rest of my questions all are regarding the page eight of the, uh, the preliminary. So, we've done some really good positive operational changes in the last year. Also hazardous waste is just a great, great thing. So is it the same plan this year, June first to September thirtieth? Okay. You purchased a compaction trailer for recycling to haul?
Yeah.
Do we have any numbers, like, I remember when we hauled, say, plastics, you know, it was just, if it used to be the most we can get on it was ten ton, is it show, now we're doing fourteen or? Like, what, I, I'm just looking at what are the positive results of.
No, we are like, okay, so, yeah. Like, you know, like, we haul paper, cardboard and combing, uh, twominy day, right? So, like, uh, like, it would go like, uh, in co, if we take combing, the total weight is like, I don't know, fifteen to sixteen tons. In one trip, we'll take that one, right?
But what did it, if we take sixteen now, before we got the compaction trailer, we were only able to get up to twelve, say? That's what I'm just.
So you're saying, what, what's, is, now that you've got the compaction trailer, what was the improvement over the regular trailer, where you just, where you use the whole stick?
You know, when, when I joined, it's, it, like, I had that compaction trailer, so.
Okay, all right, so we'd have to go back and find that.
Yeah, I, I just think it's a positive, anytime it's been a positive.
It's significant, I remember the discussions the day when we went to the compaction trailer, it's significant, very, very. What allows you to get the max weight?
Yeah. See where, when you haul paper, you could always get max weight.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but you couldn't with cardboard and plastic, so. The composting program, last year was the first year we started. What cut, was it, what were the positive results from?
We, we, we had some challenges, uh, we've made some improvements to the process, and we're anticipating this year will, uh, produce some quality product for later.
So when, when can we start bringing material up, like last year when we?
Well, like, we have, yeah, we have started, we have started, right? So, so you can bring like, uh, any time.
And what do we do with it? Like, what's the long-term plan, Jeff, like, once it's?
Well, we should be able to, we should be able to develop a, a product, uh, that is reusable, whether we would just use it on that landfill site or, you know, bringing up areas, or if, if we would actually eventually get this on to the public, that's probably gonna be, our, our problem is with volume, uh, we, we, volume of material we're taking out there, that's why we're looking at the grinder as well, low is to, um, get a better product. Right now, what we're producing, um, last year wouldn't be a sellable product, and so ultimately, we're trying to get to that great quality compost coming out of this process.
Yeah, like, for, for composting, like, uh, for composting, we don't have a, like, uh, permission to sell the product. We don't have like our C O, C O A doesn't authorize us to sell the product, right? So now it is a very good, like, uh, learning how to make a compost, so once we have a compost, we'll use that compost for landscaping work at the landfill. We can't give to the public, like, if we start to, like, uh, make good compost, then we have to revise our C O A.
So it's probably more so next year, this time, when we'll have more historical data.
Exactly, hey, it, like you said, the, 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 last year was a learning process, uh, it were occurred. We know where we need to make improvements, we're gonna make those this year, and hopefully we'll have a very prominent.
Learning of anything, it took time, but with birds, with composting.
I think overall with this department, you can s, continually see the evolution, and continually gets better and better every year, so. Kudos to everyone involved in that. That's it for me, Dave.
Is it like deer feet now?
Just, a question, actually outside, but just for clarification, on the, um, the grass clippings and the branches and that sort of thing. There's the bin that, uh, across the recycle bin, so I could take a bag of grass clippings or small branches, but if I got, I'm not sure even how to pose this question, if I got, um, larger branches, thicker than twenty five millimeters, and I've got them in the trailer, I have to take over the scale, then I pay for that and go up to the far end, am I, is that correct?
You know, council, like, last year, like, we took like branches smaller than one inches, right?
Yeah.
But it was a pain, like, you know, like, the people's, like, they brought like a big branches, and they hide those branches, and they say, okay, we have a small branch, right? It was, it was a big argument at the scale, saying that, okay, we, I have a branches smaller than one inches, right? So it was a big fight, so what did, what we did this year, okay, we'll take only like a leaf, leaf and grass, no branches. So we're not taking any branches anymore, we're just taking leaf and yard waste.
Okay. Okay.
And like, uh, if you have a leaf and what, yard waste, you can bring and you can dump, there's a green, a green, green, right? So if you have like branches, you have to dry it, you have to pay a salary for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Good start, let's see.
It's, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's really good.
Yeah, oxen and other waste is pretty good, right? But a little bit, that composting is a little bit complicated, right, so.
I think the electronics, the electronics piece that's there and the things that have been done there is just really progressive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one thing that retention is, and the plateau will help us with, is water and compost. One, one of the biggest things about getting good quality compost is, first, you need to get the carbon and nitrogen ratios correct, but then we lose moisture. Yeah, right now, for us, the water there is very challenging, so, uh, even though we might have a mixture that's, that's good, uh, if you don't have that moisture there, it's not gonna cook, and if it doesn't cook, you don't produce the products you want, so.
That is, that is a challenge, it takes lots of, lots of effort. Do it slow.
I think the big, the big piece is the anticipation of what, uh, some of the rate increases may potentially be or projected to be when we start looking at tipping fees and all sorts of things, like what, what that'll be when it comes forward to council.
It's all gonna be taken out of our hands pretty soon. The decisions are gonna take it all over.
That can be worrisome.
Okay, any more questions?
No, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I guess again, same commentary, if that's good, this role will come forward to the, and then, so let Mukesh start forming the topic, projects and moving forward.
All right.
Thanks, Mukesh.
All right, thanks.
And then I, I'm a little wondering if you want to flag the break before we launch into.
Yes.
The high level operating budget discussion.
Yeah.
Ten.
Ten? Twenty, under the asset management plan, there was a suggestion, a recommendation, that the city look at increasing tax rates by one point six percent per year.
Plus inflation.
Plus inflation. Was it plus inflation or did it say one point six and thereafter inflation?
I said one point six plus inflation, I believe it said that every year.
That's all your other stuff.
Uh, so, one point six percent, which, uh, two hundred and forty thousand, I should have the number in front of me, but would be roughly three, sixty three, seventy to three eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that is simply for capital spend. Now, what I'm going to say to you, in the past, when the city has talked, when the administration has talked to council about increasing dollars for capital spend, we've said, give it to us, but all on roads and bridges, but all on roads and bridges, we've got every year for the last four or five years covered, we've been doing it. This year, I'm going to say to you, we are in trouble with this of our capital spend program. You may recall the announcement that was done with the capital budget, and I can send it out for you. When I checked, the capital spend took off roads and bridges and took off all our regular other items. We had, what was it, twenty or forty thousand dollars left towards the rest of our capital spend program. In my opinion, we need to start putting some money towards other programs. Part of it was the hundred and ten thousand dollar issue we had from the Kuwait Memorial Arena. Um, I would actually recommend to councils considering one point six, the one ten, one point six or a portion thereof, that that go towards overall capital budget this year, and then we will reevaluate in future years. So that is, uh, the other item that is not included in here, there was a hundred thousand dollar ask basically for the substance abuse and alcohol task force. It would be my recommendation to council that if you're going to consider that ask, that serious consideration be given to a modest amount. Perhaps twenty percent, recognizing it's half of the year, so maybe a ten thousand dollar allocation with the, um, requirement to let go of partnerships to provide that kind of program. And I'm not looking for those decisions today, I'm looking for a council to understand what those major impacts are and have some high level discussion. Uh, so those are additional items that are not accounted for in the roughly almost three percent tax rate increase. Does council have any questions on these?
Karen, can you? You're saying a couple of things you want, or you're proposing for consideration, uh, not today, could you repeat those for me?
So, the hun, there was a hundred and ten thousand, I believe, error in Kuwait Memorial Arena debt payment in twenty sixteen. What happened was, in the capital budget, sorry, you probably don't want the explanation again.
I'm, I'm actually kind of, because I'm still struggling a little bit with what happened there.
So what happens, when we look at capital spend, we take the last year's capital spend level, we add on any debt payments that are matured, so we're no longer paying the debt, we're gonna put it back to the capital. We take off any debt payments that we're issuing, so for example, as we issued Kuwait Memorial Arena, we would take it off. So, when the twenty sixteen budget was done last year, we took the twenty fifteen capital spend, and that includes unusual spending. And we took off the hundred and ten thousand estimated for the Kuwait Memorial Arena debt payment. It never, when that happens, it needs to go into the operating budget to show that, so there's a, a net zero, so we take hundred and ten off here, we put it in here, the net is zero, right?
Okay.
Uh, what happened is it came off the capital spend, didn't go into the operating budget. So basically, we reduced our normal capital spend by that hundred and ten thousand dollars. Council can say, nope, that's what happened, and you're not getting it back, but that's part of the issue why our residual capital spend after roads and bridges is so low. So I, I think because it was an error last year's budget, I really like council to be a strong consideration to reduce that hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
And if I have the wrong number, I apologize.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense, what you're saying, then. Not that you're gonna get it, but it makes sense, just kidding.
Don't ask, you don't get. Um, the next one, councillor Irving, was the three hundred and eighty thousand roughly for the capital budget, that's the one point six percent increase under the asset management plan.
Okay.
And then the final one was the hundred thousand dollar request from the corner of substance abuse and mental health task force. And the reason this is here separately is traditionally, if it's a group that councils fund it, we keep putting it in the budget, and we put it in whatever their ask is, which is why you're seeing the development commission increase ask, just showing in the budget right now. That doesn't mean council will or won't get, give it to them, but we put it in. When new groups come along, you don't put their asks in the budget, you put it on a list for council to consider, is that something you're gonna start funding? So, they're the only new group that came forward looking for dollars this year, I don't know where.
No, there is one other.
Is there?
And I'm, I would like to have a conversation when I'm moving forward, was it Ball Diamonds over in town?
Jeffrey Mallon.
Jeffrey Mallon, they, they, they bought forward an ask in a letter about three weeks ago. And I think it was twenty for this year and twenty for next, if I'm.
There's more than that, they also want labor of our summer students, they want equipment, so it's a significant.
It adds up to a significant amount.
Uh, I think we discussed it, we discussed.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that that was bought forward, I wanna make sure it's included in our conversation. Now, you just said to Rory that you put in, you put in here the one point six percent for.
Asset management.
Asset management, or you didn't put it, okay, that's why I can't see, okay.
That's, that's an additional, and I apologize, because I had an extra page upstairs, and I, I helped print it, but just outlining those three items that were additional, that they're not built in, but the asset management plan has recommended.
So, what, I just heard you also say that you'd rather not, um, your thinking is that you'd rather not be looking at one, that one point six percent for asset? And put it into, um, just, uh, overall capital, did you, did I hear you say that?
What I said to you was, normally when we ask for the increases, because our roads and bridge infrastructure deficit is so large.
Yeah.
Normally, we say, give us some increase in the tax, I'll be just for capital, but put it only in roads and bridges.
Yeah, we've done that.
And we've had, been very successful in increasing our allocation of roads and bridges for doing that. This year, what I'm saying to you is, if you recall the issue we have with the capital budget, and that there's not really a lot of dollars available for any other kind of spending, it's my recommendation that we, hey, say forget roads and bridges, but we not put into roads and bridges, that we look as part of our overall capital spend dollars and let staff use it. Let's use it as opposed to specific to roads and bridges.
And some of it might go to roads and bridges.
I expect it won't, because the bottom line is, if, if we're gonna put roads and bridges, the whole thing is needed in roads and bridges. But I think we're trying so hard to address the roads and bridge issue that we're forgetting, we have other items and other services and other priorities, and we need to at least be able to allocate some dollars to this.
Have we, have we, you haven't factored in the, the increase in tax, gas tax next year and, and going on, and the increase in the OSIP formula funding?
So those will be allocated directly to capital spend, for sure, yes.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not, because the OSIP formula by twenty nineteen were up to over eight hundred thousand, which is a significant increase on a yearly basis.
So you're suggesting, Dave, that we might, we might be able to defer the one point four, or one point, whatever it was.
Yeah, what I meant, we're getting sort of, that's exactly where I'm going, the other, the other thing is, that's, that's part of it.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, that's part of it, is because it's just, when, when you start looking at it, what's sustainable, and to go to the bottom line, just like, right now, with this, I know the conversations I have in the coffee shops and the grocery stores and on the street, is, the other one is, is, is the unknown, and, and we'll see what it is. So what's next in Ontario? Now, for those of you that are no more, and you've heard what I, what I did in the speech for, um, the statements that were made in there, I've been just touched on where we're going, where we might be going, or what, you know, the options are with what's next in Ontario, and that's that long-term sustainable funding that the government challenged AMO with, come up with a, with a plan? Because you're right, you can't keep relying on, on grants and stuff, you have to, you need some long-term sustainable funding. That will probably, a decision will be made on that very soon, and, and, and it'll start coming up, I believe, this summer. Uh, which direction we're going, there's a couple more, um, Nano's polls going out, commissioned by AMO to, to sort of feel of the public on, on their direction, and I, I did mention a couple of them in that, in my speech. AMO this summer, there's probably going to be, in time, I'm gonna figure this out, I think there's gonna be some direction coming at AMO. A better way to our board meeting, and, uh, but it, it's, it's coming, what's next in Ontario? Were the government of the day or the other parties are gonna go with this? I don't know. But it will be, uh, si, if it, if the direction that I think we're gonna be going, goes, it'll have a significant impact on us then. So it'll, it'll have a significant impact on city, have a significant impact on everybody. It's getting through the, um, I guess the, the recipe, because now people have the same infrastructure deficit. There's things to, to get figured out and clarified, but I hope it'll, it'll, um, materialize and, and go through and have a, it'll have a significant impact on us.
So you're saying, hold on, on.
Well.
Because we've got other priorities, right?
If we have a, uh, assume we get a two, you know, two and a half percent tax increase, now we haven't touched the assessment yet, I realize that, but, but, uh, the, uh, a tax increase of two point six or whatever, plus another one point, it's not tolerable, it's not sustainable, it's not, it's just, there's no way. I mean, Republican, I mean, I heard of, I got stopped the other day here, and, um.
You need to quick go into those coffee shops.
No, this was on the street, this was written, it's an open. No, this is on the street, this was written, Ted's Nothills, and this is like, it's, it's everywhere, and, and, um, you know, we can't pay our taxes anymore. And our taxes are high, and they continually bring this up, um, you know, even with the ministers in the Veripet session in Noma. Like, you keep bringing rules on us that cost us more money, and, 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 and we, with, with no funding. And, you know, it, I don't care if it's handicap accessibility, which absolutely you have to have, but, I mean, just using, that's a bad example, we spend, you'd like to use that, but all these new rules and regulations, on whether it's source water protection, whether, I mean, you go on and on and on and on and on, should have a list of them, that cost us more money. No funding. I mean, I don't know where governments figure this money's gonna come from, because the public is, we have the highest taxes in Canada, in Ontario, property taxes. And we have the highest property tax in nor- northern Ontario, in, in the province of Ontario, property taxes. And every time they bring out more rules and regulations, it costs more money. On top of your normal wage increases and everything else that we have to pick up, and our, and our fixed costs, is it, you'd like to say that you have, you, you can't get by, that's why the own funding, and we did make a presentation, as you know, good robes to Minister, like, to Mr. Vuhini, own funding.
Didn't go very well.
And, uh, well, we'll see how it goes, I mean, advocacy, as we know, with the premier, uh, you don't quit, it sometimes comes true. And, um, so we'll, we'll have to see what happens there, but I mean, it's a, it's just a, it's just a, it's getting awful frustrating.
No, I was just gonna say, I appreciate the comments, but that's not high level what you're talking, Dave, that's kind of right at the ground level, so, can we kinda?
If, if.
No, limits, not at the ground level.
Well, I'm, I mean, on the front street.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can move forward, yeah.
If, if I could, with regards to the, what's next in Ontario and the potential increases, even if this province get our full ask, is not sufficient to address our ongoing infrastructure needs and our deficit. So I think it's important for council to be aware of that, when you're thinking about whether or not you wanna wait to see if the province is going to take in on that. It's not sufficient to address our ongoing infrastructure deficit. I would still strongly encourage council to consider some increase related to capital spend, of course, I'm gonna recommend to you, uh, roughly two point, um, roughly two point one, whatever it would be, to reinstated a hundred and ten plus to one point six, but at a minimum, I would strongly encourage you reinstated a hundred and ten, plus give some consideration to an additional increase for capital. So I just, I'd be most, if I didn't say.
Clarifications, the one ten, just for seventeen, or it's an ongoing?
If, well, once we put the one ten back in, we have the other going.
Um, I just for ca- clarification, when we, when we get the own funding, do they tell us where it needs to go, where it's spent, or we just get that, and we just, is it, and the capital and operating, both?
We, we use it for operating, I mean, it goes into the pool, right, and that's why I call them allocated revenues, it's not specific, they tell us how to calculate it?
Yes, and the, um, gas tax is roads, all, it all goes to roads, where you spend that?
Gas tax can also be used towards other infrastructure, um, water and wastewater, I believe there's also a component now where it could be used for recreation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I don't have all the breakdown details here, we can spend it on our roads.
Right, okay.
Because it is our most significant infrastructure deficit, but if council said, my intent is not to start a debate, but if council said, we want to twin, how much gas tax can we use over the next, or save over the next three years to put towards a twin? That is an option, I believe, but I would have to confirm the details of how that would happen, but there are options other than roads and bridges.
They did open it up, though.
Yeah, I thought they had, so I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, and Heather has graciously printed out the, um, GM reading, so her request is twenty thousand a year.
What is that, sorry?
Twenty thousand a year for seventeen and eighteen, plus labor, plus equipment, as Council Dan had mentioned. Um, I would suggest to you, this would be an unusual spend, not something we put in our operating budget, but nevertheless, it is.
Contagion's here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, that's up to council.
All right.
But that'll come up during our discussion, Karen, so.
So I think the difficult decision, I'm not looking for the high level, I'm not looking for the final decisions on what these are, the difficult decision that I think I need to get from council today is, what's your tolerance level on a levy increase? Um, because we're already, I, I mean, Jonathan, sorry, John, I apologize, but Jonathan's dad worked here for years and called him Jonathan, so why am Jonathan in my head? So I'm trying very hard, so.
Which do you prefer?
John's fine, neither, doesn't matter.
Was Jonathan when you were in trouble, I hope?
Yeah, usually.
That's what I said.
Jonathan it is.
So John has done a really great job going through, combing through all the budgets, uh, last week, the detailed budgets, to try to make sure we were identifying anything that looked unusual. I did a little bit of updating this weekend based on your review, John, and I think there's still a few more things that we can look at. Uh, but I'm gonna suggest to you, without impacting service levels, that there's probably not significant reductions that you can make in our operating budgets. And so I think we're at the point now where I need to understand what, what's administration's direction, so I, I can, we can easily print the budgets and send them out to council, um, but I think I need to understand if council is going to look at that roughly three percent we're at right now, before looking at capital and say, that's not acceptable, or that's something that we think as a preliminary, and we're all looking past the tax rates today, but just, uh, a general feedback, because if I took everything that I was recommending to you, the increase would actually be more like a five percent. That is a levy increase, not a tax rate increase. So if we take this year's assessment, and we figure out whatever the tax rate would be, the national tax rate, to levy the same amount as last year, we're saying we need five percent more than that, right now. Based on the, on the capital request, and I'm not even throwing in the full substance abuse and mental health task force request in there, or the baseball fields.
Rate of inflation?
Karen, just, I'm not clear. What about, is there any impact with increased assessment?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So.
So, yes, there isn't actually, I think.
What you're saying, Karen, just, um, if we don't do anything.
Yep.
Using last year's numbers, we have to raise the rate five percent.
No, not the rate.
Tax, the total taxes we require.
So if we.
If we had twenty million dollars, five percent, we need a hundred thousand dollars, or one million dollars, we have one million. I'm not good with numbers.
I mean.
To margin.
This should be interesting, but yeah.
And then, so that's our target, a million dollar increase, just using my numbers. Then you'd see what the rates would be based on the new assessment.
Correct, and then we're gonna have a separate discussion today about rates, but I think this is a good segue way to get John to hand out the next page, which is the assessment information. It does show you the impact by class.
So just one question, Marissa, so we haven't even looked at the operating budget yet.
You have not.
So, and, um, you're coming up with this increase of five percent, so.
The reason I'm doing this is, because we're so late in the game.
Yeah.
I think I wanna understand if council's gonna change staff, you need to go back and cut, or are we gonna do a cost of living, and that's roughly, I don't know what that is on hand, I should look at that, one point five?
I think it's like five percent right now.
One point seven.
Is it nice?
There you go.
Yeah, I, 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 I said that for, you know, um, moves on cheap, but, but the reality is, 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 and I would care, is, is, uh, no different. Is, what do you believe is palatable, the public, public sees zero, but with the, the mill rate, depending on our assessment here, which we're gonna look at, maybe we reduce the mill rate, like we have, because of the increase in assessment, uh, where do we, where do we end up? Would we reduce the mill rate, four percent, two percent, three percent, one percent, zero? Do we come in flatline, do we, so, or, you know, let's see, is, is a three percent increase, because it doesn't matter how you count it, people aren't stupid. If, if we reduce the mill rate, whatever, and, and it actually come in, on average, a three percent increase, factored in the mill rate, and the assessment increase, what's palatable? And the same discussion we've had over the last years, is, um, let's get to this two point six two, or whatever it was, would be enough of last year.
It was about two percent or just.
But, so we did a tax rate reduction, and then we have a levy increase, and Paul, you said he'll bring that with him.
So it, it, actually, so, here's, let's, let's get into this piece, just give us an idea of, of, um, how much room we have.
So you will see, if you look at the first column on the left-hand side, the twenty sixteen net growth, this is what we call, or this is new building, new build, stuff like demolition, et cetera. Uh, you can see, not very modest, but there is some, there is a reduction in the commercial. When you go across and you look at the equity change, those are the phase in, those include the phase in of the increased assessment, so, last assessment of my house was worth a hundred thousand dollars, this year is worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All fictional numbers, if you're looking at my house, but, um, that is required to be phased in over four years. Uh, and you can see for the four years, the change in assessment, when you look down, you can see, if you look on the commercial line, uh, reduction of five, five point eight million in twenty seventeen. We are required to hand out our decreases the year they occur, so when there's a reassessment, we have to give the full decrease out, but we are required to phase in any increases. So that's showing you how the assessment gets impacted each year. There is out for the assessment growth, uh, we continue to report it there, and this is gonna launch us into a bit of a segue, because, uh, what we are seeing is ongoing shifting, if you look at the second page, and it kind of identically shows the bells first.
I just wanna ask you this, that, that sixty one million dollars, there's increased, um, uh, equity through assessment? On the residential?
Uh, yep.
Wow.
Per year.
I think I'm paying most of that.
Twenty sixty three million dollars, you have a lovely house, and you're paying most of that, well done.
Next time I build a house, it's gonna be an ugly house.
If you are paying most of that, you can afford it. I'm just saying. So if you look at the chart on the second page, you can see there, uh, residential assessment, uh, growing, and the commercial assessment dropping. And then the others, growing, that are lesser state, that's significant. What that means is we're seeing the ongoing shifts from commercial to the residential assessment. Council's aware that we've had a number of adjustments to some of our religious commercial properties. Um, and I don't, can't comment on whether that's the sole reason for this, we have any commercial properties, but I expect that certainly play the role of the impact on us.
So, um, the increase in residential on a percentage, what is it?
Um, if you look over to the right-hand side, it tells you the percentage change, so if you look way over always, the right-hand side on, on, under twenty seventeen to twenty ten value change.
For.
Just over twenty percent increase to residential properties, phased in over four years.
Between four and five percent, yeah?
Correct.
So, yeah, so.
Now, what I wanna make sure that we're distinguishing is, despite what happens with the assessment, the province and the city has tried to be very clear in recent years, our levy changes, what did we levy last year, if it was twenty four million, what are we levying this year? If it's up five percent, one percent, minus percent, that's our levy change, it doesn't matter what the assessment does, we'll adjust our rates to reflect that assessment. So that is regardless of the fact that there's growth in assessment, we try to be very clear, now, in theory, the argument is the growth. So if somebody is built, but you can see there, the numbers are very small for the net growth, four million, four half million dollars in net growth in assessment, not taxes assessment. So this is, does anybody have any questions on the assess page before I hit out the, or before John hits out the next one?
It just seems to me, sorry, um, it just seems to me that.
Somebody informal on these discussions, you guys frequently think about it.
So, it just seems to me we have such a huge equity, um, change in the residential, we've, we've increased that assessment so much, but we're still struggling with having enough money to do all we do, like, does that make sense?
Well, it's because of, sort of, the shortage of houses, and, and people selling their houses for a lot more than what they paid for them, so it brings the assessed value up. You would, uh, in Don Parfitt's words, you would normally counter with the reduction in the mill rate to, because the assessment is not newfound money, really, well, new assessment's newfound money. The other assessment is just, uh, uh, the tax increases, people would call it, because their houses work more.
But, it is doing that. Our tax rate has dropped every year since I've owned my house.
Yeah.
But my assessment is going up, but my higher rate is.
Seventy, yeah.
So we still have a levy increase.
Right. And the only way to counter is your community has to grow, without slashing services or reducing costs. You have to, you have to have growth, now, I'm not talking, when I talk growth, I'm not saying my house was assessed at two hundred thousand for this year, and when we phased in, it's two sixty. It's new growth, because then that allows you, even though assessment's going up, that tax rate can drop even more.
Your base becomes more stable.
Yeah.
And increases.
Yeah. So I guess that's the, um, so it goes back again to our priority, our, our focus. If we get away from the budget, is, we really need to find a way to increase our, the number of housing units, or companies, even commercial.
Yeah.
You know? And that's, that needs to be our focus on a go-forward basis, a long-term focus.
What we need to do to.
Or else we're gonna, because otherwise, this is the same conversation we had last year, and the conversation my first year, and it goes to what you said, Dave, when people talk to you, is, you know, as long as we have a shortage of those houses, the pricing of housing of community to rise, and if it's based on market value, then everybody continues to shift upwards.
Yeah, so we get away from the shopping. On the, on the positive side, if the assessment was going down that much, can you imagine what our tax increases would be?
Yeah, exactly.
But that doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, so, once we're, we really need to establish that's our priority going forward. And you look at everything potentially that could happen, you know, whether you hear about the mine wanting to put a, um, processing plant.
Yeah.
Or the casino, all those require people to run them. Where do those people have?
I think.
When I was away.
More pressure.
I'm digressing, but.
No, I see.
It will help us in the future, so we can get away from this, it'll help alleviate or lessen the pain.
I think, just another comment too, and it's, um, it's, it's like a one-off, with an election coming up provincially, uh, different things start coming down to two, but those are one-off costs, we still gotta look at the stability of where we're going in the base, and that's why, although the question of what's our tolerance level is pretty straightforward, and I, I respect why it's coming out, it's really not an easy one to, to grapple with, or to, to come up with an answer, because you can, it's like throwing out a balloon, you can throw out a figure, but what's the impact at this level? And what, what do we need to do to increase and enhance our base level and our security level with this fluctuating, or on the rise, so it's, um,
Be a bit of a.
I guess that's why we're here, right?
Yeah.
Be a bit of a, tomorrow, an update on recent, the recent meetings, certain council session, answer some of the questions.
So maybe I should reframe the question, is council's preference for Miss Pyle to cut service to reduce, to keep the tax rate, or sorry, the tax levy increase small? Or is it your preference to maintain service levels?
Give us a shopping, that's what you wanna cut.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, unless you do the shopping.
In my mind, our community has more to offer than other communities. You know, when you talk about Dryden or Fort, the rates may be lower date, but, you know, the services that are available here, and the quality services. I think if we start cutting, then we'll just talk about bringing people in the community, it makes us.
Limits your growth potential.
Does, I agree. So um I think we really have to look seriously at taking on additional costs now. I I just look at some point, it it's becoming, because everybody wants money, the first group they look to, the first people they come asking. This city, and so again, I talk about looking at the long term picture. It's. I think we need to prioritize what we do, do it the best we can. And if having that quality service is gonna cost us X amount of dollars, then I believe long term, I think that's personally. I think that's the best interest of the community and the city.
Yeah, right. Just if I may add to Dan's saying, I um just brief comment before I give my response is that. Over the years in a municipality, the demands that have been placed on a municipality have significantly increased and expanded. It at one time was roads and bridges and sewers, not even so much bridges, but you know, basic services. We've we've become for a municipality groups, the go to place for funding and for support. Because of what's happening federally and provincially and filtering down to municipalities where the the buck stops here. And I always remember, I can't remember her name, but um Ann Mulville, Mulville?
Mm hmm, Marloca.
Yeah, she was the president of AMO years ago and she said municipalities are at the bottom of the food chain when it comes to demands. But getting to the point, um I would not wanna see us cut any services. I I I would agree with Dan that let's look where we've got our strengths to attract and bring it here. And and how do we do that effectively? Uh and yet, uh you know, retain our citizens. I we we start, I guess my question is, it's just a broad brush stroke here. If we start cutting back in certain areas, it's it's like the Donald, it's like Beaman's presentation on on. On the the water and wastewater budget this morning. Well, we've got X number of pumps, we've gotta start figuring them out. So if we cut there, it's ultimately gonna affect our water quality. If we start cutting in certain areas and are not cautious, it's gonna affect the quality of our community and what we have to attract and enhance people. So I think we we have to be very careful. I I would be very reluctant to to cut any any services, to look at a list of services and cut. And I go out of the limb here, I think there's some that we have to expand on and some we have to build on. Could I tell you what they are today? Probably a couple I could take out, but for a different discussion, but I think these are the broad things we have to look at as a community. I'm 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 finished my, I'm caught on.
I kind of agree. I I don't think we can cut services. The but the one comment I wanna make about increasing taxes or the tax levy, whatever is, um and it comes to increased assessment of some of the properties in the community is. Some of us will submit, um will be looking at significant tax increases just on basis of our assessment. But there are many people in this community that did not get a high assessment.
It's true.
So really, it's the people that are are paying more in taxes that are are carrying the load and the additional. Also, but there are some people, even if we were to go to a zero percent, I mean, they were no higher assessment, um no tax, increased tax levy. So I think we need to always keep that in mind too, and it's, I I think that we need to be looking for a tax increase, 'cause I don't think we should be cutting service. I will be more adversity impacted because of that, because of my higher assessment, as many people in the community. But there are a lot of people in this community that did not get those high assessments.
Unfortunately.
So they're not gonna be impacted as significantly as others, but really, there's a little bit of a dichotomy there. Where a lot, uh some people are pulling the load more unfairly in the city than others. So there's a lot of people that won't have room to complain.
There's lots of them.
I'll be one of them. But I recognize, you know, to have services, you have to pay for them. Like I, if you're gonna have services, you have to pay for them. It's as simple as that.
I think what we're all saying, and I I don't think we're saying it differently, even now it's re, are they now, I think now it's whole and holding to municipalities without premiums. The vast majority of people do not want a reduction in services.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And that's general consensus with, you know, what are great across municipalities. And who wants to be the person to cut and what service you wanna cut? I don't think we're there yet. I don't, I hope that the growth that we're sort of anticipating over the next few years is gonna make up a different segment. Just talking about for holding your tax rates.
Well, that's all, because we don't, we just dropped five hundred people in the last census.
Well, did we?
That's what it says.
And yet we have, our our housing is at the lowest level ever for life occupancy, is at the highest level ever. We've got so I'm, I don't believe in the numbers, I trust the numbers unless we've got more, fewer people who per house and and a lot. And I would suggest some of the houses have a lot of people that are not being, you know, in the census.
I I guess just another comment, Dan, I don't know if you're speaking to it or alluding to it, but as a community, we've also got a strat plan on where we wanna go. What we wanna look at. And I think these are uh some of the basic things we have to do. So Karen, I don't think we're giving you an answer.
No, you are. You are seeing the reasonable tax increase, probably not five percent. Sorry, I I guess I'm converting whatever, but not looking to service cut, so.
Yeah, and certainly, growth, growth is gonna require investment, and that's just a plain, simple fact that we're, we're gonna continue to rely more heavily on on residential than we should be. Unless we can, we can develop some growth, we have, we have to do that.
And I think what what staff will do then is bring back a budget that reflects existing service levels, which is what we normally try to do. And then council can decide whether to cap or allocation, which means the budgets are pretty much finalized at this point. Um I think we have just a little bit of work to do and we'll be printing them and getting them out of the binders, but they will speak for you. Um however, oh, go ahead.
No, 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 I can, I'll wait.
Well, no, I'm ch, I'm shifting gears a little bit.
No, that's okay.
So councilor Sharon, your discussion about tax rates and some residential properties paying more, John's gonna hand out a page that tells.
Thanks so quick.
Like I, like I said. In twenty seventeen or in twenty sixteen, there was a new assessment. And as you saw from the assessment page, there was a significant, there was a reduction in commercial and a present increase in residential. And that is just primarily to assessment value change, not new construction, not demolition. What I've tried to do here and and I I know you're all looking at it, so hopefully I can explain it uh briefly. In, well, how the province does it is in order to figure out what your last year's levy is, you have to calculate what they call notional rates. So if you take the new assessment, you have to figure out the tax rate that would apply to that, to come up with the same levy as last year. If that's a zero, then that's your notional rate, that's your starting point. These aren't the final notional rates, because I am aware there's, Michelle Saunders, our tax collector, has actually given me a list of about sixty properties where there's errors on the return rule. Errors or adjustments that need to be made to the return rule. So these aren't the final, but this is the information I had when I ran it this weekend. When uh there's a reassessment, what happens generally is you will see shifting between classes. So for example, commercials gone down, residential's gone up. That means if you left everything the same as it was in previous years for the ratios between classes, you'd see more shifting onto the residential class. Council has the ability to change the tax rates or the ratios. I don't know if you're all familiar with ratios, we had the conversation before about um if the the resident residential class ratio is one. So if the commercial ratio is two, uh the commercial rate is two times the residential rate. If the multi residential rate is one point seven, the multi residential rate is one point seven times the residential rate. Council has the ability to shift those ratios to maintain this tax burden by class. So that means if the commercial assessment drops, you can increase the commercial ratio so that commercial class pays the same burden that they did previously. We are aware that there's been a number of changes related to the larger box stores. I can't confirm or deny offhand that those are the only significant changes in that class. What that does is businesses that may not have seen a necessary reduction will actually get a higher increase. So what um what I did is I tried to give you some examples and kind of show you how the percentage impact is. That percentage tax impact to class, that's taking into account the assessment related changes for those class. So when you look at this and if you take the residential one up top, the first line is just our two thousand sixteen tax rates. Those are the rates that I got from Michelle that were approved by council. The twenty seventeen notional tax rates are the rates that OPTA tells us we have to calculate. And again, these will be adjusted, but these are the preliminary, the rates that OPTA tells us we have to calculate for if we take this year's assessment, apply a rate to it and come up with last year's levy amount. Those are the new rates. So you can see those rates are lower than last year's. When you look at the percentage tax rate change, you can see there is a drop of almost three percent in residential. But if you look at the percentage tax impacts of the class, it's an increase of one point seven two. Even though the theory is to make sure that you're levying the same levy as last year. The reason is because of the shifting between classes. If you look, go down to the third bullet and look at the commercial, you will see the same thing, a drop of two point nine two percent in municipal tax rate. Because again, we do it based on overall, but an actual drop to the class of over six percent. If you look at the line below that, the two thousand seventeen revenue neutral notional rates, can see that rate would actually increase by two point nine two percent. Not decrease by two point nine two percent. And the adjustment to the class is about minus point three percent. That means there'll be winners and losers in that class. So you have businesses that have significant assessment reductions. You may have businesses that have stable or increasing assessment. And actually, I'm gonna get John to hand, hand out the next two, the last two pages.
On the commercial or on the the large commercial, could we not break, break that out where the reductions have come like the King and Terry homers? Can we not break them out from the rest of the commercial uh and 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 have a middle rate for them?
So.
Ask that question, actually. No one might understand this is a way of doing it.
So what the mayor is talking about is it's called banning or graduated tax rates. And it's something that we're seriously looking at. The starting point was uh to find out if our software provider was able to accommodate it. Unfortunately, we are not set up to accommodate banded rates. However, they have come up with a um manner of using their existing system, which will require some manual work, so it's an option. I will tell you, we're at a meeting with other municipalities on Friday, other CEOs from other municipalities. And while we were there, Doug from Fort Francis was telling us they were able to introduce banded rates in their commercial. Because their two largest assessed values were in the two box stores that got significant reductions. I can't tell you, we need to do some work. If we can do it that way here, it could be that other commercial properties that did not see um reductions. Maybe capture as part of that group, and you may push more on to our larger businesses. Uh so until I know that information, because some of the assessed values we saw from the box stores brought them pretty low. You'll recall the the line in particular that council had discussed, sorry, I'm trying to be vague but useful since we're in open. Um but it was a fairly low assessment. So in order to pick that business up, I expect we would capture a large number of commercial properties. So um I've actually got Marcy going through some assessment data from me this morning to try to separate it. And that was one of the recommendations that the city would look at, banning and whether or not that makes sense. And whether we can try to maintain some of that burden by this larger stores. And how will that impact other taxpayers? Are we lucky like Fort Francis where there's only the two taxpayers and therefore it's probably fair? Or is that gonna capture another eighty, twelve million? So we we need to do a bit of work on that. We really need to do that, that's this week's project. Uh so when I talk about printing the budgets, some of them are apartment budgets, but you may not get your full budget binders at this point. But what I need council to have a terrible discussion on, are you interested in trying to maintain the tax burden by class? The last reassessment, that's what we did. Council said, yes, we want, we don't wanna push more on to the residential property. Or since this uh new system of taxation, I feel old, but back in nineteen ninety eight, since the new system of taxation was rolled out. What we saw is continual and ongoing shifts onto the residential property class. We have made every effort to make, use every tool to help eliminate that shift. But there will be winners and losers. If you look at the, sorry, John, did you? If you look at, John's gonna hand out two pages and I'm just gonna give you a board down here. What I did is I printed the residential and I printed the commercial. And these are based on two rates. If you look at the first two pages of either attachment, so let's look at the residential information. Which is probably the one you just brought. If you look at the first two pages, this is how properties were impacted based on a percentage increase or decrease based on those notional rates. So same kind of format as last year, zero levy increase. If you go to the second page, you will see almost fifty three hundred properties are seeing increase in their taxes. And about seventeen hundred and sixty six are seeing decreased rates. If you go to the next page, which is page three, that's one of two, but page three. These are based on using the tools to shift, to shift so that they have the same tax burden by class. If you go to that last page, you'll see only thirty seven hundred properties now have tax increases. And about thirty three hundred have tax decreases in the residential class. So you can see there, there's a significant change in how many numbers of properties have these increases. I know I'm saying this too quickly and it might be hard to follow. So if you go to, if you have this one and right here, about mid page, it'll say residential. And if you go to page two, and you look at the totals.
This is the last one you can handle?
Uh could you be, uh, no, it's not.
This will definitely have tools.
And if you look at page two, or the second page, and you look at totals, you can see there are five thousand two hundred ninety seven is the first number. That is the number of properties that will see an increase in our residential tax group. And if you go across to the next total, which says seventeen hundred and sixty six, which is on the right hand side of the page. That is the number of residential properties that will see decreases using the same tax structure as last year. If we work, use the tools to keep ship, uh keep the burden by class, if you go to the last page, you'll see the total properties with increases now is dropped to thirty seven hundred and seventy. So if we don't maintain burden by class, you'll see almost fifty three hundred residential properties with an increase. If you do maintain burden by class, you'll see that's dropped to thirty seven hundred and seventy. And the reason I'm sharing this with you, and I have no intent to look at which the property, which property is is which, other than the commercial, just to see if the banded rates make sense. You need to understand there are winners or losers. So in this situation, it would be of assistance to the residential class to not push more on. But it will result in, because the assessment went down in commercial, it will result in some business owners paying a higher burden to accommodate the fact that other commercial assessment went down. This is a lot to think about, so.
De- depending on if you can separate the.
If we can, um if we could, well, we can. We can absolutely ban, sorry, go ahead.
Well, you finish your explanation, 'cause you have the answer.
So we can absolutely ban by the version class. The question is, can we just capture the lens of solvency production or will we pull on other businesses? That are have higher levels of assessment that didn't see reductions of assessment.
And if we keep it within the class.
Like hotels and stuff and whatever.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be an option, yeah.
So if we keep it within the class, we're not pushing any lost burden onto res.
Correct. And that's.
If you do large commercial retail, or would it be?
Would you do a large commercial retail, or would it be just a large commercial?
We have to do it by the property classes, so the four commercial property classes we have are the broad, or sorry, the residual commercial, which is our general commercial, our office shopping center, and then probably not vegan land. So it would have to be everybody in that broad commercial class.
Kind of has a domino effect.
It may. So we will bring back those options and make recommendations based on that, but I first need to understand, whether or not council supports moving forward with, uh, shifting the tax, the tax burden so that we ma- sorry, maintaining the tax burden by class.
Well, definitely want to see the numbers.
There will be no net impact on the two thousand and seventeen levy. It's just which group pays them. So that, and that's why I brought you a, for example, on the tax rates. Say here's an example of what it does to your tax rates, you can see how it shifts. It's not my intent at any point to talk about it, but we will talk to your members and how it may affect by council.
You can't make decisions based on.
No.
Okay. So Karen, to help me, um, where we're at at this point, I'm, I'm probably missing a couple of things, so we, these are broad brush, so we've kind of done, undertaken a review at a high level, had some discussion and dialogue. Um, we've got, uh, uh, an agreement, um, to pursue with the budgets that are completed or near complete, near completion with no reduction in service.
Correct.
And can come back with, um, looking at the levy options, residential or commercial. Am I?
No, I, I'm actually looking for council direction if you want, I mean, if you, if council directions, we want more details on the levy shifting, and we'll run both scenarios.
Okay, so then that we're, kind of, that's kind of where we're at so far, okay. I don't know how to answer that last question.
It is a tough one. Uh, if you're looking for my recommendation, I would recommend you maintain the burden by class. Strictly from the perspective of we have shifted on to the residential properties time and time again, not because we meant to, because we've had no control over it. Even back to, and I can remember in nineteen ninety-eight, there was something like a four or five percent shift on the residential properties despite implementing all the tools that maybe I could try to minimize that shift. We see it over and over again, and the residential is consistently growing from, from value perspective, not from, uh, not from building perspective. And I don't know how much more the residential can bear. That's not to recognize the issue with the other classes as well. But at least to recognize that we would love to maintain the burden.
So, the tax tools two thousand seventeen frequency were cheap, so, the pages three and four, that's me.
Are you in residential or commercial?
This is your residential.
Your residential, Ben.
I just wanted to get this one. Yes.
So, that would be, we generated fifteen million dollars in residential taxes. Um, if we left it within the class, those from zero to three percent, twenty-three hundred and eighty bills would go up. And two thousand four hundred and forty-four would go down.
Are you on page two?
I'm on page two, just looking at the first percentage.
Correct. Within the three percent.
Yeah, and if we go overall, approximately thirty-eight hundred properties would go up. Approximately thirty-three hundred would go down. Which, either I wasn't aware, or I just, I haven't, you know, captured. It was always my impression that majority would be significantly higher, these taxes would hang up. It's above sixty, forty split.
Now, that is based on the notional rates, so that would change if council.
No, I'm just using generally what we've got in front of us now.
Yeah. And that's strictly because we're trying to maintain the residential.
So, where's, where's our railway end up in here? I know it's not gonna be significant, but which class does it?
How many acres would it take in?
Uh, so railway is not in.
Is that different in, because it doesn't fall in these, right?
It's in the right of ways, so there's railroads and electrical corridors, and there is a prescribed rate. They are looking to change the rate this year. It's my understanding that it is increasing, but no final rate has been set. I will tell you though, railroads are not a significant, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars or anything, yeah.
No, because I saw a number.
They're about one municipality's about thirty-five hundred. Yeah, it's the same as the average house.
Okay.
Doesn't seem right.
And my other question is, just for clarification, if we go back to your original sheet, so we ended up with the combined major impacts of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Got it.
Okay, so the ones I'm looking at there, the external organizations, our numbers have jumped significantly for D-SAP and for Pinecrest. Is that because in relation to our partners within D-SAP, our assessments have gone up? Or is some of it like the land admin is based on usage?
Uh, no, I.
Strictly, we, our assessment is now.
I believe that D-SAP, oh, you know what, I'm gonna have to confirm a share of the share ratios. I do understand that assessment is part of that. I don't know the detail in the land admin, but I believe it's different from the other assessments.
I hope range would be assessment.
But the, it's partly assessment and part, maybe partly an increase in their costs as well, right?
Okay, thank you.
Is that the twenty sixteen rates about? Doing this, right? On a hundred thousand dollar, your tax would be fourteen hundred and seven hundred.
Sorry, see that?
On the twenty sixteen rate, the combined rate, on a hundred thousand dollars, it would be around fourteen hundred and.
Yep.
Not everybody has it, though.
No, so what the mayor is talking about here is if you took the residential twenty sixteen rate, the tax rate is simply you multiply it by a certain kind of thing.
So Jonathan, how are you liking it so far? I use that name, you're not in trouble yet.
And you're making it sound like the pressure's on him, the owner of the city.
He doesn't feel it.
No, no.
It's on us to make the decision, for sure. Yeah. We take the information and.
So if I could be so bold, I think what I'm hearing is a general consensus that we would maintain the tax burden by class. Um, and move forward in that manner, so all of that will come back as a topic and, uh, do required laws, et cetera. But we will try to get that out to you, at least the detailed lectures this week. I would love for council to look at your calendars and figure out what we can have on next budget being, which will have a bit more detail to it.
When am I gonna be going?
We look at, um.
That was May twenty-second for everybody. Mary did, I should check with his first.
That's a holiday.
Oh, no wonder I'm pretty.
Yeah, so if you wanna have the discussion with yourself, let us know how it turned out.
Make it a good house. Yeah.
I'll, I'll be gone the, um.
You're gone that whole week, are you not?
I'll be gone the twenty, twenty-third, fourth, and fifth.
Dan, what?
I'm actually the twenty-sixth, I hope.
What about you? I am unavailable after the twenty-fourth for probably ten days to fourteen days.
So it'd be nice to do it beforehand.
I really wanna be a part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do it beforehand?
So it'd be easy to say, hey, I wasn't part of the decision, it's my responsibility to be part of it.
Um.
Thank you.
May twenty-third, that's the Tuesday.
I'm gone.
Oh, you are gone, sorry, I thought you said.
No, I, I, I'm gone, uh, twenty, everything's, uh.
All that, what?
Fifteenth, um, next Monday.
Yeah, that's open, I have no.
Well, we have, we have, we have. We call a day training, the managers and supervisors.
Oh, jeez. He's, I, I'll be leaving. The sixteenth is our council meeting, that's the other thing, I was gonna, but moving until eleven o'clock.
Is that enough time?
No, because I'm leaving, I have the one o'clock flight over here.
Oh, the council meeting?
The council meeting, and that, that way I, I could make, get the council meeting, and it's off leaving, twelve-thirty, the latest. It's nice, it's kind of airport, you don't have to be there an hour ahead, but you're still gonna be there fifteen minutes in, so.
But, you're, will you be off on that weekday?
Well, I, 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 yeah, I should be back, um, on Thursday night, the nineteenth would.
I got, I got here nineteenth. Thunder Bay.
So that's, Dan, you said you would like it before the twenty, like the twenty-third?
My knee replacement's on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so.
Was it the fifteenth?
Can we cancel the fifteenth?
No, later.
The fifteenth, or?
Well, it's a relative staff training thing, yeah, that's Karen's goal.
You can bring the staff here for training on budgets.
They come and they watch, I'm thinking, nobody wants to come listen to the budget.
The fifteenth is open for everybody on council, though.
I've got the fifteenth open.
I know Louise's not here, but, um, he, he was very clear about it, so.
Or, um, we do it the fifteenth and, uh, just, we leave the training on, but you and I send out a bit. It's probably maybe the better, or happen lash if you wanna have a training.
Okay.
Okay.
What is it, women's?
I think it is to.
Nobody wants to do it with women's.
No, it, it's a full, uh, managers and supervisors, there's some that are, it's all detailed, I guess. I don't know, I'm always surprised when I go.
Why am I here?
So the fifteenth, what time is your training?
Nine till four.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, no, I, all day.
So can we?
Be at six in the morning? No.
Do it on the fifteenth?
I'm ready, it's fifteen, yeah. I shared it.
Start at eight, eight in the morning, or?
Six in the morning?
My walk's over by six, we can, so I can have everything.
I'm not adverse to starting at eight.
I'm fine with that.
Eight?
Whatever time you want to start is good with me. That's the only time I ever gonna say that. I'm so excited for budget, I wanna start early.
See that.
So would Natalie, is she coming with that too, or is?
No, just John and Karen.
I think some of the discussion we had today helped, at least it's obedient.
Yeah.
Well, that was the intent of today, to get the idea that you're going around council's head, get an official tolerance, yeah.
Some of these things I was hearing, everybody else was talking, those, they said fishing, are we, what did you give the four posts? Are we, I mean, these are issues too.
If you wanna make those decisions today, I'll write it down and change them, trust me.
No, I'm not ready.
No, we should have the discussion on.
No, but I'm just saying, it's part of the discussion.
Yeah.
So are we eight, Heather?
Eight o'clock.
All righty.
That's for sure.
I can make.
I just sent you a email request.
Cause I don't want to cancel my. Talk to appointment for the fourth time.
No, I'll change it.
Is it right at eight, though? Can, can we start at nine?
I'll cancel it now and now, and hopefully I can get, I changed it three times now, I'm sure.
Yeah, one more time is a good.
Well, I might need a new dance, actually.
Go, go players?
It's all on your phones. All righty.
Okay, awesome, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, that works.
Well.
Counselor Rayner has a resolution. I'm hoping I get out of your quarter by one, I have an appointment, correct, so.
I'm hoping you're at twelve seventeen.
Okay, good.
What, oh, no, sorry.
We have in town.
Mm-hmm.
You're not going anywhere.
Well, you put it on top of your mind, Karen, it's an inside one.
On the floor, on the floor?
I can read the resolution for you. Moved by Counselor Rayner, second by Counselor Goss.
The pursuit to section two thirty-nine and Miss Black two thousand and one is amended. Authorization is hereby given for committee to move into a closed session at twelve sixteen P M, to discuss the following matter, labor relations on that. So Karen, close.
Close.